On the council floor, you know, people need to be connected with their government. It's a healthy connection, government access, and so same with community access, which is Channel 36, and in my opinion, the same with public access.
You sit on the Budget Committee, of course.
Yes, I do.
Is there a way, in this horrible budget year coming up, that the city could continue to fund it?
Channel 36 is your question on that one. We found a way to keep it going for this present fiscal year, where we were in just as bad shape as we're gonna be when we go through the budget process for the next fiscal year. So I will be committed to see if we can find a way to do it, but I can't make any guarantees. When I hear that we might have to lay off people who work in the parks, or people who work in the libraries, or not have enough money for intervention programs, I begin to wonder what our priorities should be and could be. I'm very worried about our city budget, our state budget, and I dare say the federal budget.
Do you think there's a place for the Internet and all of this as an outlet for public access producers?
I think it is a definite outlet for it. People who are Internet savvy, it's usually people who are under 50, who really live on it kind of thing, and if they're under 40 even more so, or 30. I think the senior citizen types, the type who turn on Channel 35, they really haven't gotten that close to it. You know, I'm a 63-year-old, I'm close enough to it that I can push buttons around and move it, and type a few letters and numbers, but I know a lot of people aren't able to do that. So it is a great, great mechanism for those who've grown up with the new technology, that make it an empowered part of their life. I see a lot of young people running around with iPhones and with BlackBerrys, and you know, they're all connected on that aspect, as well as their computers at home. In fact, many of them have no more, you know, landlines, it's just cellphones, which also serve, you know, not as just a cellphone, but a computer, and a, you know, like I just mentioned. So there are lots of people, millions of people, who do live off of the Internet, but not everybody.
In the minute or so we have left, I'm sure there are some people who've never seen public access. What kinds of things would we be missing if we went away?
Well, in my opinion, you miss a lot of community-based programming that people who are participating in want to see. You see a lot of news and talk shows from people who have points of views that never get on the mainstream television. You have good people who do books, and people who do things that are comical and enjoyable just to watch. The creative talent that we have in Los Angeles, that doesn't get on a mainstream cable channel or a mainstream broadcast signal, are gonna disappear. They won't have a chance for an outlet. And it's not good for community, it's not good for the democracy, to have less free expression, less electronic support, and more importantly, you know, less First Amendment rights.
Just to be clear, finally, so everybody understands, what happens on New Year's Day, January 1st, 2009, if nothing is done to address this issue?
Well, the plug is gonna be pulled on a lot of public access local channels in cable systems. You don't have them on your AT&amp;T new lineup, or your Verizon, other than maybe on some Barker channels that are hard to get to. You're gonna lose some quality programming that people enjoyed watching on local channels, and for sure, you're not gonna see any regional, or interconnected, or statewide channels. It'll be a tremendous loss.
District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosenthal, thanks so much for joining us to explain all this on Council Week in Review.
It's my pleasure, Jack, and thank you to your listeners and viewers who watch Channel 35.
Since this entire situation rests in the hands of the people up in Sacramento, if you feel passionately about this issue, and want to make your feelings heard, this would be a good time to contact your representatives in Sacramento. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings, and programming about city department services and events. And you can watch city council meetings live, or view past meetings, by going to the city's website at lacity.org, and follow the instructions for video on demand. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday, at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sundays, at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 17th, 2008. On behalf of Robert Brown and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
... The city of Los Angeles. When duty calls, the LAPD responds.
I have a one emergency.
I have a time here with an emergency.
How old is your daughter?
She's four years old. Her name's Janine.
I lost my puppy. Can you help me?
We have a critical missing. There is an Amber Alert, so let's look for any information you get, pass that into the Watch Commander. Let's be careful out there.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
I think he's going nuts if this was my daughter.
Push units at 785-785-211, this is a murder. We're looking at our morning, we can hardly remember the child market. Suspect, 95, last since 95, off the doors, we're taking his custody.
785-511.
All units, 785, now we're in pursuit of a 211 suspect, some up near the house, we're requesting backup. Any area in, Captain, I'm pushing him in.
Seven hours, five minutes.
To protect and to serve.
All units, call 411, the Catalina suspect.
Standing with our community.
Los Angeles Police Department, this morning issued an Amber Alert. A suspect is driving a black Honda Civic.
Working as a team.
Hey, what's up?
I think I saw that car that you were looking for.
Did you show us?
Yeah.
That's good.
They take pride in what they do. And when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
It's positive on the vehicle.
Roger.
My stuff, too, we have positive on the Amber Alert vehicle.
It looks like they found the car.
The LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.[337.72]
Thank you very much, Mr. President and Councilmembers. It is an honor to have my Uncle William Perry and his wife Josephine Perry here with me today from Shaker Heights, Ohio. And I'm honored because they've traveled all the way from Shaker Heights, Ohio, where they've spent most of their adult life to tell a story. My uncle, Sergeant A. William Perry, is a World War II veteran who proudly served with the Ninety-Second Fighting Buffalo Soldiers Infantry Division. His unit was the first African-American regiment to see combat on the Italian front during the war. As he would later explain, he had no idea why so many black men signed up and stated, "We came to Italy to fight a war when there was no benefit from it. There was no democracy for us back home before the civil rights movement. I guess we thought, by fighting, we could make the situation back home better for us." Because of the heroism, bravery, and courage of the Fighting Ninety-Second Infantry, legendary filmmaker Spike Lee made the decision to tell their important story in a motion picture. Miracle at Santana is a film based on the intriguing novel and screenplay by author James McBride and was inspired by actual events. The story centers around a topic that is not often discussed in World War II movies: the experiences of black men in America's armed forces in World War II, specifically the all-black Ninety-Second Buffalo Soldier Division stationed in Tuscany, Italy. The story is loosely inspired by Santana di Stazema massacre that took place in August of 1944. Scores of Italians were executed by the Waffen SS in front of a church for failing to give information on Italian partisan activity in the areas surrounding the town. Waffen SS was a combat unit composed of volunteer troops who had a strong alliance to the Nazi ideology. The movie follows four black soldiers from the all-black Ninety-Second Infantry Division who get trapped near a small Tuscan village on the front line during the Italian campaign of World War II after one of them risks his life to save a young Italian boy. What makes the movie even more special is that my uncle was a consultant for the film and for the novel upon which it was based. And I want to thank Heidi Trada—this is a Disney movie—thank you to Disney for not only being here today in support but providing us with a copy of the film to screen tomorrow. And I really appreciate it, truly, truly. And with the outstanding and generous support of Disney Studios, I will be hosting a screening of the film tomorrow right here in City Hall. It is currently in the theater, so this is a special treat. The screening will begin at 1:00 p.m., and for more information, you can call 473-7009. I'm glad that I had the opportunity to recognize and celebrate my uncle today. His story and those of his brothers is one of true patriotism. They paved the way for so many soldiers who have followed and have been given the privilege to excel and find their voice in the United States military. And I'm grateful that the men who served with my uncle have finally been honored and recognized for their bravery and commitment to the cause in spite of how our country chose to treat them at that time. During the war, our black soldiers found respect, appreciation, and thanks from the people they liberated abroad and returned to a country where they were still segregated. In Europe, they were welcomed by British, Italian, and French troops who appreciated that they were there in the fight against the Nazis. My uncle recounted that they were allowed to eat at the same restaurants. He was able to visit the opera in Florence for the first time. But when they returned to the United States, many lived to see the work of civil rights heroes and have seen change in our great country. They reclaimed their lives, their careers, and raised their families without bitterness and with great patriotism. And they went unrecognized for a long time. A few months ago, on the 60th anniversary of the integration of our armed forces, my uncle and his colleague Captain Spencer Moore were invited to the White House to receive a special recognition for their heroism. They stood with military leaders like Colin Powell, Secretary of Defense Robert Gates, and were officially honored for their bravery in the war, and they were recognized by House Speaker Nancy Pelosi. It was a beautiful ceremony that recognized their commitment to our country in the face of racism at home. This is a story that should be told. Many of you are familiar with the 100th, 442nd MIS, the Japanese-Americans who faced similar discrimination during the war, and I am proud that they share their story every day. So I am proud also that this story is being told. We are fast approaching Veterans' Day, and I wanted Sergeant A. William Perry to come to our city and to thank him publicly for what he has done. And it's a great honor for me to experience the story of Santana with my uncle. And I want to present to you Sergeant A. William Perry, member of the Ninety-Second Fighting Buffalo Infantry Division, World War II.
Ms. Perry, before he speaks, Mr. Rosendahl wanted to say something.
I just want to say, this is where I'm at when I hear what I've just heard about you. I'm from the Vietnam era, post-283 up in the Palisades. And we all honor you for being a trailblazer, a trailblazer for basic human and civil rights and a fighter for the American freedom. And now I know where Ms. Jan Perry gets that energy, that forceful power, that sense of leadership. It comes from you because you're truly a leader, and I salute you on behalf of all veterans of all wars. Bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been a long time in coming, but how this happened, we've been meeting the Ninety-Second, the veterans, in Washington, DC every October around Columbus's birthday. The Ninety-Second was activated that day in 1942 at Fort McClellan. And we've been meeting every year since 1955, trying to correct the history of it, the writing, things that were written about us. So this is no surprise to us. The 442nd, 100th Battalion was in Italy when we arrived, the 307th. We fought with them. They were assigned to the Ninety-Second, and we were proud to have them. But nobody mentions this. When you see the movies, or The Longest Day and the other movies, you always see John Wayne and these guys, but you never see any of the black soldiers that fought. We spent 11 months in Italy fighting. And I said before, and it may be wrong, but I felt more freedom in Italy than I did when I trained in Alabama at that time because it was a pretty tough place to live in 1942 and 1943. But I'm just glad to be here, and I'm glad this day has arrived. And I'm proud to see my niece here in the council. Her father was the mayor of a small village there in Cleveland, Ohio. And there's also her mother, too. Did she tell you that? They both were in that village. So thank you very much.
In honor of your participation in correcting the record of history and consultancy on the movie, I'm proud, very proud, to present this to you, Sergeant A. William Perry, my uncle.
Wow, thank you. I want to say one thing. This isn't really about me. This is about some 3,000 casualties of Ninety-Second experience in Italy. So we had 3,000 casualties. We had two Medal of Honor winners. Took us 60 years to get them for them. But we also—one of them brought his own artillery down in the unit, and he took out two 40-man platoons with him as he perished. We also produced a United States Senator, Edward Brooke of Massachusetts. We produced the first black general to command the division in field, Reggie Davison. So we're proud of our record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Perry. I'd now like to recognize our President of the Council, Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And as we all know, we are here today—we sometimes talk about our city as being something that is 227 years old, but we sit on land here that is much, much older than that, millennia-old. We sit here not in Los Angeles, but what was originally Yangna, and it is the Indian word meaning the place of poison oak. Not a lot has changed here, I guess, in many millennia here in City Hall, but whether it's Topanga, Kowenga, Tahanga, words like Tehachapi, which we see in the place names, we know that this is Native America here in Los Angeles. And today, we celebrate the very special month in the city of Los Angeles in which we recognize the native roots of this land, of this city, of this area. And it gives me great pleasure to welcome to our chambers to help celebrate this the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, Mayor Antonio Villarosa. But at the outset, I'd like to welcome our friends who are here representing the various tribes and the people of Los Angeles, whose blood is intermixed with many around here and who have been a part of Los Angeles before. We had that as its name. So please welcome an opening performance from the Southern California Indian Center and our mayor, Antonio Villarosa. Mayor Villarosa. That was quick. I did it before.
I want to thank the council president and councilmember Perry, who is in the back right now, but I want to thank the two of them. It's an honor to be here today for the third year in a row with all my relations to recognize the history, the culture, and the vast achievements of the American Indian community here in the city of Los Angeles. As we all know, but sometimes we have to be reminded, that before the pobladores settled in this region, we had the Tangvun, the Tataviam, and the Chumash people. They were and always will remain the first people of Los Angeles. It's an honor for me as mayor of this great city to be standing at City Hall, where at one time stood the Tangvun village of Yangna. But American Indian Heritage Month is not just a history month celebrating a distant time, it's a celebration of a culture, many cultures, that thrive today. And the voice of this community is heard loud and clear in so much of our own vision of what the city can and should be like now and into the future. A vision of a city that respects the bounty of Mother Nature, cares for its elderly and sick, and nourishes a sense of community. Long before this city was established and before many talked about family values, these were the values of the native peoples, and we're very, very proud to honor those values, that culture here today. But these are issues that our city grapples with every day. They're issues at the core of what this city stands for. Today, we'd like to recognize our local tribal leadership for all they do to keep our wonderful American Indian culture alive here in Los Angeles. With us today is Anthony Morales, Sr., the tribal chair of the Tangvun Gabrielino Indians; Rudy Ortega, Jr., tribal chair of the Tataviam Fernandeno Indians; and I'd like to bring up Pamela Salas, give a special acknowledgement to the American Indian Science and Engineering Association. This is an organization committed to increasing the number of American Indian and Alaskan natives in engineering, science, and other related technology disciplines. Like you, we understand that the future of this city is in educating our young people. This is a council that has stood up for that idea, and we want to acknowledge you for the tremendous efforts you've made in increasing the number of American Indians and Alaskan natives in these very important disciplines. We also want to acknowledge Oracle for their commitment in championing diversity and cultural awareness, which, of course, has been very, very important in all of our heritage months, and we want to thank you for your support. Thank you. And of course, in all of our Heritage Month celebrations, our media sponsor is always, ABC Seven. We'd like to bring them up as well. Well, we seem to give more of these to Walt Disney than anybody I know. But, you know, every year—and I think it's important for us to say this, folks—every year Walt Disney steps up to celebrate the many cultures and heritages that make up this city, and we want to acknowledge them for that once again.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, for allowing us this wonderful opportunity to join you today to celebrate American Indian Heritage Month. As you know, Disney is a multicultural company. It takes pride in diversity, and it's comprised of employees from all walks of life, from all over the world. And we are committed to including American Indians in many of our areas of businesses, including our theme parks and resorts. So on behalf of the Walt Disney Company, we are honored to be here with you today to recognize the valuable contributions of the American Indian community in the city of Los Angeles. I also want to acknowledge ACES. Congratulations on your 30th anniversary, and thank you for the many years of service in removing the barriers to academic success for American Indian students so they can have a brighter future and we can have a better community. So thank you for allowing us to be here.
And to all of our leaders who are here today, we want to proclaim today and this month of American Indian Heritage Month. And on behalf of the city, and I know all of our colleagues here, when we reestablished this Heritage Month after some 20 years of not celebrating this Heritage Month, we thought it was important that we acknowledge our roots, the fact that this is the largest urban American Indian population here anywhere in the United States. And the contributions of this community to this city have been from the very founding of the city. And so on behalf of the entire council and myself, I'd like to proclaim November American Indian Heritage Month.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Garcetti, we do have a colleague, Mr. Rosendahl, who'd like to say a few words before we continue the program. Mr. Rosendahl.
Honorable Mayor and Mr. President of the Council, and to the Indian Nation assembled here today. A year ago, I stood here and we talked about the human ancestor remains at Playa Vista. It was our deep appreciation of your continued respect for your ancestors that spills over to all of us in this great city. And I'm here to announce, as our dear friend Anthony Morales, who's been playing a major role in bringing people together among the tribal leaders and the commission that has been so effective in the last year, that I'm going to announce that on December the 13th, Playa Vista has been cooperating with the Indian Nation, and those human remains will be put to rest in a sacred spot on the property. And I also would like to say to Chief Morales, when I first met you at University High School Springs, that you have taken such leadership to preserve the water, which is the sacred purity and the connection of all of us. It is a great honor that you have done that to the Brentwood area there, and we will forever be grateful for your leadership to all of us. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to be here today to celebrate and declare, proclaim November Native American Heritage Month. We're going to go out to the forecourt to continue our celebration. Of course, those of you who can sneak out for a minute or two are very welcome.
Please just thank you, and again, welcome everybody again to here. I do want to thank Disney again. As you said, you're handing out the commendations. They're always here for us. Walt came from Kansas on the Santa Fe Railroad in 1926 and lived on Vermont Avenue, and his impression of his company now lives on with their involvement and engagement in the community. And I want to thank Ogurai, who's the great General Manager of Cultural Affairs, for coordinating this for the city. It's wonderful to learn—I was taking it to Jose Weezer, just reminiscing as the mayor spoke about how important it is. And I think back years ago, we didn't do this. We didn't do this. And to see the young people come in in native dress and others to have this celebration, that's what we truly want Los Angeles all to be about. God bless the Native American people and everyone else, including our mayor, our cultural affairs chair, and Eric Garcetti. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Garcetti. Before we go to our next presentation, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacon Cardenas, Grill, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine Garcetti, 12 members present, and a poor Madam President.
Yes, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Wesson seconds.
Next, our commensary resolutions for approval.
We'll hold on just one minute. I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Next, our commensary resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, would you like to go through public comments?
We'll go through the agenda and come back to public comment.
First, there are requests to continue item number 20 to Tuesday, October 28th. Items number 21 and 22 to Wednesday to October 29th.
Unless there's objection, those will be continued.
Next, our items 1 through 6, and those are items noticed for public hearing.
Thank you. There are no cards on those items. No one wishes to call that special. So we will open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Next, our items 7 through 22, with the exception of 20, 21, and 22. Those are items which public hearings have been held. Items 15, 22, the committee reports have been submitted.
Thank you. Any specials, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Weezer?
Yes, if I could, we could continue item number 16.
Continue that to—
To Wednesday, to Wednesday.
Wednesday of next week.
Yes.
Without objection, that'll be continued to next week.
I think Wednesday's the last day.
Mr. Zine? Mr. Zine? We'll call it special, item number 15. You're required to accuse yourself on that item. Thank you. We'll call item 15 special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Next, our items 23 through 32, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Madam President, there is a card on item number 24.
Correct. Any other specials, colleagues? Those items? Any other specials? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next, on the continuation agenda, items 33 and 34 are items which public hearings have been held.
Thank you. I'd like just to be recorded as a no vote on item number 33. Any other specials, colleagues?
Madam President, item 33 should be voted separately, please.
Okay. So a vote on item 33. Open the roll.
She has it.
Excuse me?
No button.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes, 1 no.
Thank you. Item 34 is now before us, colleagues. If you could open the roll on item 34, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next, our items 35 through 37. Those are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and Madam President, there is a card on 35.
Thank you. That item will be called special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items 36 and 37, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Next item?
Madam President, it's time for the special meeting.
Why don't we—Mr. Garcetti, if you quickly, if we can do special items? Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. If you could open the roll on the—please call the roll on special meeting, please.
Alacon Cardenas, Grill, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine Garcetti, 12 members present, and a poor Madam President.
Thank you. First item?
Items 38 and 39 are items which public hearings have been held.
Thank you. Any specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items. 38? 38, okay. So open the roll on 39, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next is item 40, and that is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
And no one wishes to call that special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 40, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon has asked that we reconsider item number 33. If you could open the roll and reconsideration. Yes, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, the special meeting should be recessed, and item number 38 should be continued to the regular meeting.
Thank you. That will be the order. That will be the order. We could then open the roll and reconsideration then of item number 33, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Han, for your patience, and we'll now go back to our presentations.
Can I go forthwith on 26, please?
Forthwith on 26.
Thank you very much.
Forthwith on 8 and 9.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I know that we have an alum on this, in this horseshoe of the United States Air Force, Councilmember Smith, but it's my pleasure to join with Ms. Han today to mark a very important week here in Los Angeles, at a time when our nation is at war, at a time when we have brave men and women who are serving us throughout, not only the United States, but throughout the world. We celebrate here this week, Air Force Week. The citizens of Los Angeles during Air Force Week recognize the contributions that have been made by the United States Air Force members to our nation. And we especially recognize the personnel of Los Angeles Air Force Base that are serving and defending our nation in all parts of the world. The United States Air Force carries out their various missions with distinction and with honor, and providing a highly valuable service to our families and the communities that are part of the United States. And as members of the United States Air Force, they have become an integral part of our communities throughout the Southland. The City of Los Angeles is proud to host Los Angeles Air Force Base and is pleased to welcome so many members of the United States Air Force who choose to retire and remain here in Los Angeles. They strengthen our communities, our businesses, our neighborhoods throughout this entire region. We have a number of special events that are planned as part of Air Force Week, but they're scheduled to kick off with a proclamation ceremony in my district at the Hollywood and Highland Plaza on November 14th, followed by the Air Force Week Expo, also at Hollywood and Highland, November 14th and the 15th, as well as air force-themed film festivals and air force band concerts throughout the area. The Air Force Expo will display supersized models of aircraft, historic military photos, incredible satellite pictures and flight posters from the Air Force's history through its reach into the future. There'll be visits by astronauts and pilots for autographs, for those autograph seekers as well. And the Air Force also plans flight videos, an F-22A mini jet, a flight video game, a spinning gyro chair, rifle combat demonstrations, martial art demonstrations, and special lectures on survival tactics for everyone from all age groups. And the world-famous Air Force Honor Guard will perform their precision rifle maneuvers, and it's really something to behold if you've never seen it before. While we have the Air National Guard Dixieland Band, the Trailblazers, the ANG rock band Shockwave, and the rhythm brass ensemble from the Air Force will be providing tunes from throughout the weekend, so it'll be a great time for family and residents throughout Los Angeles. And events planned also include displays of original art from airmen all over and airwomen all over the Southland, and a unique exhibition of spacecraft, as well as a real F-16 jet engine for up-close viewing, and explosive ordinance removal robot is planned to be featured and demonstrated in the courtyard. I'm honored and to be thrilled to have all these great activities in my district, and I encourage you to come down to Hollywood and Highland and check it out. And I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Han to say a couple of words, and then we'll hear from some special guests that are here as well. Ms. Han.
Thank you, President Garcetti. I'm very pleased today to stand with you as we declare Air Force Week here in Los Angeles. And as the council member representing San Pedro, I am especially proud to be here because San Pedro has been home to Fort MacArthur, Air Force housing. We have really welcomed the Air Force families as a huge part of the fabric of San Pedro. And just what you said about the men and women in the Air Force and their families, they do support our infrastructure, they support our businesses, we welcome them in our schools. It is a group of people that we have come to in San Pedro to love and honor and work closely with on issues that make San Pedro a better place to live. And they are so loved that in fact, one of the charter schools in San Pedro, the Port of Los Angeles High School, actually makes accommodations, because sometimes these Air Force families either move, or they come late, or they're not exactly there right when it's time for the first day of school. And this high school so loves and so reaches out to the Air Force families that they make special accommodations for the young people, the students that come to us from these wonderful families. I'm also happy to say that I certainly was one of those who was so involved in the fight to keep the Los Angeles Air Force Base from being one of those that was closed down. It, thank you.[907.13][907.13](APPLAUSE). You know, every so often, the base realignment group continues to put this Air Force Base on their targeted list to close down. And we continue to make the case about how important this Air Force Base is. It's the Air Force Base that has no runways. But this Air Force Base certainly contributes to the national security of this country. And the work that the Air Force does at that location is so critical to the ongoing security of this country, it would have put such a hole in our national security programs if that base had ever closed down, that we are, we will remain vigilant. We hope it does not make it to the list anymore. But if it ever does, we are ready as a city, we are ready certainly as a state of California to step up to the plate and urge the federal government to never really put this on a list or seriously consider closing it. We do love the Air Force, it's a great time in the city that we're honoring them, we will remain vigilant to be your partners as we not only secure this nation, but as we strive to improve the very communities and neighborhoods that your families have come to be a part of.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. And we'd like to introduce Colonel Mark Vidmar and also give him, oh, and then just let me give this to him real quick, and then we'll hear, I'm sure, from a couple of the council members before we hear from the Colonel. But to declare this Air Force Week in the City of Los Angeles, on behalf of the entire city council, the mayor, we proudly welcome you and we encourage folks to get out there to Hollywood and Highland.[1014.13][1014.13](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Madam President, and to the, what are you saying, Eric? You tell them you're a Navy man?
Yeah, I have a son ready to join the Air Force as a pilot, and he's very proud
of that. We are honored to have the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, Mike Mullen, here just a couple of weeks ago, here in the city council chambers, and had an opportunity to meet him. And sometimes, I don't think you folks recognize the support you have from the people, not only in Los Angeles, but throughout the United States, for what you do, what you go through. I see the ribbons, what you have earned, and the folks with you dedicating yourselves to public safety on a national, international level, protecting the freedom, the liberties that we have. And while you don't hear it every day, there's many of us that believe in what you are doing, believe in protecting America, the land of the free, home of the brave. Councilmember Greg Smith, his son's in the Navy, Council President Eric Garcetti's in the Naval Reserve, and my son will be entering the Air Force as a pilot shortly. So many of us are in support of you. I just wanted to recognize and show the support, and I'm sure many in this audience appreciate what you folks do every single day, protecting America. Thank you.[1117.73][1117.73](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and I join too in the recognition and how important you are to us across the world, and to be able to recognize and have these events where the people of Los Angeles can particularly say thank you and learn a little bit more about the Air Force and what you're doing. So, thank you very much. And with that, is your opportunity to speak.
President Garcetti, Councilwoman Han, on behalf of the Space and Missile Center Commander, Lieutenant General John Sheridan, I'd like to thank the council very, very deeply for recognizing us and for supporting the resolution for Air Force Week, 14 through 21st of November. It occurs to me that we saw one of the Buffalo Soldiers up here earlier. Back in his day, I am given to understand that about 87% of the American population either had a direct relative or knew someone that was in the military. Unfortunately, those numbers have dropped today to somewhere in the neighborhood of 3%. So it's definitely something that we have to reach out to the community and continue our partnerships. Los Angeles has been a wonderful opportunity for partnership through the years, starting all the way back to the turn of the previous century. We had an airshow which was on a Spanish land grant that later became the Long Beach Airport. Over the years, we worked with Digital Land League, with the Glenn Martin Company, the Douglas Company, when Howard Hughes was here. So over the years, we've had a great business and community relationship with the United States Air Force. Many times, we have to remind people that we're here. One of the stories that I do talk about is I had to walk a few blocks to a grocery store, I was wearing my flight suit, and the young lady asked me which movie I was going to be in.[1213.04][1213.04](LAUGHING) And I had to remind her that in fact, there was a, there was an airbase just a few blocks away. And so one of the things we definitely want to do is get the good news stories out to people and rejuvenate some of those positive relationships that we've had over the years with the folks in Los Angeles. As many of you know, in the central and southern California region, we host five major Air Force installations, March Air Force Base, Edwards, of course, Los Angeles Air Force Base, Channel Island National Guard. And those people truly put their lives on the line every day to protect your freedom, whether you agree or disagree with a particular administration. Our job is to defend the right that you have to exercise your free opinion. And so a lot of the young men and women that we have deployed around the world truly and deeply appreciate your support. I could not have asked for a better segue from the earlier presentations. I will remind you all that we have had African-American general officers, we have had general officers with American Indian heritage, Hispanic general officers. I will tell you that today, in the United States Air Force, in fact, we're going to have a Women's Leadership Council as part of Air Force Week, and we have more female general officers in the United States Air Force than we've ever had before. So we truly do, much like some of the companies in the area, we reach across those boundaries of gender and heritage. We do our very best to serve you all, and we are delighted to have this proclamation declared. Thank you so much.[1299.50][1299.50](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much. I'd now like to recognize Ms. Perry for our next presentation.
If I could have my friends for the Big Read join me. It seems I have a lot of friends today.
Hey.
My goodness. Wow.
Yeah, we brought a lot of the kids.
Come on up, come on up.
Come close, come close, come close. Come on, kids.
Those are some big kids.
And the teachers.
Come close, you can be on TV and your parents can see you later. All right? Come close, come as close as you can. All right, this is pretty exciting. I am joined today by Olga Ray, General Manager, Department of Cultural Affairs, and with her is Sal Romo, Assistant GM, James Burks, Director of Special Projects, Will Caperton, Market Record, and Andrew Kazdin, Senior Management. From the LA Conservancy, we have Cindy Olnick, and Adam Rubin, and Janice Pober from Sony, Glenna Avila, California Institute for the Arts, Lincoln High School, John Robinson, literacy coach and his students, Hollywood Entertainment Museum, Morningside High School, Daniel Abfaltar, Education Program Manager, and Rashandra Woods, teacher, Morningside High School, and more students. And from CD9, Santee High School, Jeff Schlip. Schilp. Oh, boy. Woo. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Schilp. English and film teacher with students, Jose, is it Jose? Jose Rivera, Jaime Diaz, Paola Solis, and Danny Gonzalez. And Roosevelt High School, Ben Gertner, English teacher. So we have a big crowd here today. And it's a pleasure to join the National Endowment for the Arts and the Department of Cultural Affairs to kick off the Big Read Literacy Month here in the City of Los Angeles. This is a national initiative sponsored by the National, for the, by the NEA, that is designed to restore reading of literature to the center of American culture at a time when there has been critical decline in reading for pleasure among American youth and adults. The Department of Cultural Affairs has been awarded a grant to produce and present a Big Read celebration in the City of Los Angeles. November will be Big Read Month. The celebration and awareness campaign will consist of sequential events surrounding the novel, The Maltese Falcon, by noted author and creator of the noir literacy genre, Dashiell Hammett. More than 1,000 books will be distributed to students who will participate in LAUSD schools, including Santee High School located in the Great Ninth District. That makes me very proud, Santee. The book, say yay for Santee. Yay. All right. The book has had an influence on generations of writers and contributed to the defining of a literary genre and the image of noir of Los Angeles and popular culture. The Department of Cultural Affairs, through the support of NNEA Public Private Partnerships and the family of Dashiell Hammett, has designed the Big Read to benefit thousands of students and residents in the numerous and diverse neighborhoods of our city. They have set a very dedicated mission designed to inspire young people and their families. All the wonderful people, organizations, and schools have worked hard to put on this event and are dedicated to improving the quality of life for all the residents in their community by promoting improved literacy rates. So I want to take the opportunity to thank everyone here today. Their dedication to reading is what's fueled this project. So let's give a big welcome to the Big Read Literacy Month in November, to our city and their supporters, and let's give them, before I say give them a round of applause, we can do something simple. Pick up this book and read, and then share it with someone else. So now, let's give them a big round of applause.[1555.33][1555.33](APPLAUSE). Olga Ray.
Thank you so much. We're thrilled to be able to launch the Big Read here in the City of Los Angeles. The National Endowment for the Arts is dedicated to improving the quality of reading for all Americans, and we are very pleased that we got one of the grants to do a joint reading of Dashiell Hammett's The Maltese Falcon. All of the kids that are here today, plus about 200 more, will be with us on November 6th at Barnstall Art Park, where we're going to launch the kickoff of the Big Read Month. And there's going to be activities throughout the city all the month of November, so we really hope that you can join us. We wouldn't be able to do this without great partners and without outside funding. So in addition to the National Endowment for the Arts, I just want to bring to your attention the great collaboration that we've gotten from Sony Pictures, and I have Janice Pober here.
Thank you, Sony. Thank you, Sony. Oh, my gosh, it's an absolute pleasure for me to be here on behalf of all of us at Sony Pictures and, hello, Madam President. And I want to thank the city council members, and really, I'm actually very humbled to be here and have this recognized in light of the tremendous contributions of Sergeant Perry and the Native American community in the Air Force. So we are thrilled to be a partner in this. We salute the City of Los Angeles for their leadership on this and our partners at Cal Arts Community Arts Partnership. It's really very important to us that all the children in this city are getting access to arts education and getting ready for jobs in our industry, so I thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'd like Glenna Avila from Cal Arts to say a couple of words.
Thank you so much for letting us be here. Every day, six days a week, we have our students from Cal Arts and our faculty members going out to teach the arts in 53 diverse neighborhoods throughout LA County. And we would have more of our kids with us today, except they're all in school, but they're all reading The Maltese Falcon, and they're, about 100 of them are making an animated film about their experiences with The Maltese Falcon. We're really excited with our private-public partnership with the City of Los Angeles Cultural Affairs Department and Sony Pictures Entertainment, along with the Cal Arts Community Arts Partnership. Thank you so much for letting us be here today. Thank you.[1714.41][1714.41](APPLAUSE).
So to conclude, I just, I encourage you to look in your brown bags, because it has a full brochure that looks like this, of all of the activities that are being planned. On November the 22nd, we're going to culminate this month of literacy with a showing on the big screen in San Pedro at the Warner Grand Theater, The Maltese Falcon. And so we are really hopeful that some of you can come and join in our activities and read the book, it's in your bags. So thank you again for paying attention.[1750.12][1750.12](LAUGHING). That's a good way to close, good way to close.
Jan, Perry, thank you, Olga Ray, thank you, Sony Pictures, great, and even all the films, too, you can learn from the films. And to write, when you read, you learn how to write. I was a poor student, and I didn't do as well. My daughter, I told Jose, has read more books in the last year, she's 13, than I've read in my lifetime, probably. But my favorite book, Mike Mulligan and the Steam Shovel, is not in the bag, but I know it helped me when I used to go to Coinga Branch Library in Los Angeles. And Cal Arts, thank you. To the students at Santee, this is the key. I can tell you, the better you read, the farther you'll go. So thank you, Cultural Affairs, for the Big Read and all the work you're doing. Congratulations.[1798.15][1798.15](APPLAUSE). Congratulations.
Don't forget Lincoln and Morningside, and Marshall.
And Hollywood.
Oh, that's Tom's alma mater. Don't get him started. Marshall High School's here. All right, say something for Marshall.
Hollywood Entertainment Museum.
Hollywood Entertainment Museum, Morningside High School. And Marshall, Roosevelt, we got Roosevelt, too, okay? Mr. Huesa, we have Roosevelt.
The mayor went to Roosevelt.
All right.
And Lincoln Heights.
And Lincoln Heights. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Our next presentations are two from our President Protam and Councilwoman from the Second District, Councilwoman Wendy Grohl.
Okay. Same thing. Okay. Great. Okay, come on. Everyone, come here. Stay here. Come on. Colleagues, it's really my pleasure and honor to congratulate Jim House, who I've known for a long time, on his retirement after 37 years with the city. Yes. Jim has been a great asset to this city and has shaped the way our city has moved forward with its systems and technology advances. Jim is an L.A. native. He was born and raised in Burbank, California, and attended San Fernando Valley State College... You've dated yourself now, and me, because I knew that, Cal State University, Northridge, where he received his BA in Business Administration and began working for the city in 1971. He's worked in several departments of the city, Office of the City Clerk, Los Angeles Police Department, Department of Building and Safety, Department of Recreation and Parks, and the Department of General Services. He began working for the Office of the CAO in 1977 as an administrative analyst and has worked there for 31 years in many capacities. He really has been a dedicated employee, and I can attest to that, and one who has given invaluable support and information to city officials, city employees, and the citizens of Los Angeles. He has provided us with some key policy recommendations, general administrative support analysis, and topics which included the city budget and resources. You're leaving us at a bad time here, Jim. Could use your help. Systems and information technology, fleet management, process reengineering, fuel site consolidation, project management, and program and management audits. He particularly played a key role in the preparation of comprehensive reports on the city's public safety systems, safety systems project, fuel management and fuel site consolidation plans, our fire and police dispatch systems, and the multi-agency task force sanitation vehicle selection process review. One of the things that, as I was reading your bio, was the fact that you helped devise the first plan and implementation of the personal computer technology in the police department and designed a management audit of our official police garages, which led to the first competitive bid for police area towing and provided over $5 million in new revenues for the city. Come up with some other good ideas like that for us, Jim, and your retirement. He really has been involved on a number of looking at our storage tanks and the requirements for replacement. He's been recognized through his career, received numerous awards for his contributions to the city, received the Department of Building and Safety's certificate of appreciation for his efforts in the award of a systems integration contract for the design, development, and implementation of the department's plan check and inspection system. He was acknowledged by Mike Hernandez for implementing the first-ever personal computer purchase program. He has universally, I think, been respected for his innovation, his strategic vision, his out-of-the-box thinking and problem-solving, his ability really to motivate employees. He is well-respected in the department and clearly has been able to articulate very complex issues in a very simple matter for those of us on the City Council and other departments. I understand that, Jim, you're going to pursue your love of traveling upon retirement to visit your daughter and grandson in Japan. He's also taken recent trips to England, Ireland, Scotland, France, Belgium, Luxembourg, Germany, and the Netherlands. So, we look forward to getting a postcard from you on your travels and making us feel guilty that we're all still here working hard. But, you are going to pursue your love of photography and carpentry, as well as you like to fly gliders. Wow, I didn't know that. So, we know you're going to love spending time with your daughter Karen and Cheryl and the grandson Morgan, and he's just been an incredible employee, where someone who not only has worked behind the scenes, but we've seen here in City Council, who's made a difference in the city, whether it be through development of systems or finding us money to do some of the other things we'd like to do in the city of Los Angeles, providing quality-of-life services. And so, it really is my distinct honor, Jim, to present with you this certificate and resolution, which has many of the accomplishments I was able to articulate and signed by the mayor, our controller, our city attorney, and the entire City Council. Congratulations on your retirement from the city of Los Angeles and your 37 years. Thank you so much.
I'm humbled. I'm usually up here talking about somebody else. It's real hard for me to talk about myself. But, it's been five mayors, I believe, and too many council members to count, and it's been an interesting and very rewarding career, and I really can't think of anything I would have rather have done with my employed career. It was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to serve the people and the mayor and the council of the city of Los Angeles all these years, and I thank you all for the honor.
So, this is my day to get to acknowledge some incredible people who've worked in the city of Los Angeles. Now, I thought 37 years was a long time, Don, until I read that you're retiring after 51 years in the city of Los Angeles. And as I say, you all come on up. We want his cheering squad behind him here. No, okay. So, it really gives me great pride to stand here today with Don Vincent, who was retiring from 51 years of distinguished public service to the city of Los Angeles. He was born on October 3rd, 1936, in Provo, Utah, in the same farmhouse that his mother was born in, and moved to Los Angeles where his family, when he was just three months old. That makes him, in my book, a Los Angeles native, almost, and he's lived mostly in the Corcetta-Canyata Valley area. He went to Pasadena High School, and from there, he went into the United States Army. He served our country from 1954 through 1956 and was assigned to the 11th Airborne Division for infantry training and jump school. He graduated from jump school in the middle of his time in the service in May of 1955 and was assigned to the 82nd Airborne Division for the remainder of his service. Don returned to the city of Los Angeles as a Los Angeles police officer in 1957 and was promoted to sergeant in July of 1966, lieutenant three years later, and captain in April of 1975. While working as an officer, he obtained his AA degree in 1963 from Pasadena City College, a bachelor's degree in 1967 from Cal State L.A., and during his time as a lieutenant in the police department, he earned his Juris Doctorate degree in 1973 from Southwest University School of Law. He was appointed the commanding officer of Internal Affairs in March of 1978 and stayed in that capacity until his end of watch, his retirement from LAPD, in October of 1983. Now, most people would just be glad to retire and enjoy that, but not Don. So, from August until October, he did double duty for the city of L.A., serving as the commanding officer of Internal Affairs while also undergoing training as a deputy city attorney. They actually let him try a few cases during that time. He has worked in a number of assignments in the offices of city attorney, including serving as the prosecutor in the criminal branch for one and a half years, a trial attorney in the civil liability division for six years. He was first supervising attorney of the newly-formed police litigation unit, in which he served as both a supervisor and a trial attorney for 12 years. He was promoted in 1994 to Assistant City Attorney, and in November, he became the supervising attorney for the newly-formed Rampart Corruption Unit, later renamed the Complex Police Litigation Unit. I think that's a good name for that. He's tried a number of cases, 104 jury trials, to be exact, before both state and federal courts, specializing in police civil rights defense. Two of the better-known cases were the Rodney King versus LAPD and Matzerino, sorry if I'm saying that, versus LAPD. That was the North Hollywood Bank robbery case and shootout. Don's public service extends far beyond his city service. He's been a member of the California State Bar since 1974, the American Board of Trial Advocates since 1992 with the rank of Advocate, and served as the exalted ruler of the Glendale Elks Lodge in 2005. He's been very involved in the community as a leader of the Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Explorer Scouts, and manager and coach of Little League Baseball. Don's life has not been without challenges, and I was reading about this today, Don. He's a cancer survivor, who, while completing his first year of law school, was diagnosed with synovial cell sarcoma, a very aggressive form of cancer, that had a fatality rate of 98% in two years, and received a recommended treatment of amputation of his leg. With the encouragement of the dean of Southwestern, Don decided he would not give up. He underwent more aggressive surgery... excuse me, treatment with massive doses of radiation, which left with him some permanent damage to his leg. But, Don beat the odds, and we are so happy, Don, that you did not give up, because you have been able to serve the city and be so helpful to us, and particularly be with us today. His family provided an incredible amount of support during this time, and throughout his year, he has two children, Celeste and Brian, three grandchildren, twins Brian and Don and Ashley, and one great-grandchild, Eric. I have really enjoyed my time with you, as I've been a City Council member, seeing you across the table. He's a no-nonsense guy. I think that comes with both being in the military and an LAPD officer, and of course, being an incredible city attorney. Your years of expertise, that 51 years, have been a blessing to the city of Los Angeles for what you've been able to do. I'm proud that you've been a city employee for all of us, and I know all the people behind me would agree with that, that you have just been outstanding, and we're sorry that you don't want to spend a few more years with us, Don. We could think of a new career for you. But, it really is my distinct pleasure and honor to present to Don W. Vincent this resolution for his decades of service to Los Angeles as an incredible public servant for us, and signed by the entire council and the mayor and controller and city attorney. Please, join me in thanking Don for his incredible service to the city of Los Angeles. And, Don, now, you get to also speak your mind here today, since you're leaving 51 years, and what you really think of us after 51 years.
Well, after 51 years, I can say that I couldn't have picked a better place to work. On the police department, it was outstanding, and the only reason I retired there, because I came out number two on the commander's list, and it must have been hard times then, too, because the mayor cut four commander positions out. So, after waiting a couple of years and not promoting, I decided I'd just walk across the street to the city attorney's office, when I was only going to stay about two or three years and then go out and become a real attorney. But, when I got there, I was so impressed with the integrity and the quality of the attorney that I stayed there. Not so tough after all. The integrity and the quality of the attorneys is just outstanding, and I was thinking about it today, when we ship a lot of cases out, we handled them all. We saved the city a lot of money, not only in our victories, but in the fees that we spent, would not spend for sending them out. So, it's been a great career for me on each side, and I'm very happy, and I thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you, Don. Thank you. Thank you so much for letting me honor this great employee today.
Before you leave, we have two council members, actually, who want to give their good wishes, Mr. Zine and then Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I think Mr. Garcetti was so enthralled, he was failing to look at the screen where we were wanting to say some comments. Many people don't know, you still work out at the police academy. You still go to the L.A. Police Academy.
Play racquetball with more.
Play racquetball. I've seen you up there, and here comes a man from the city attorney's office, many years with the city of Los Angeles, has been mentioned over 50 years, the time with the police department, and you still go back to that same police academy, because your roots are in public safety and public service to the people of Los Angeles. I'm sure you'll still go up there, because there's a lot of retirees that go up there. They play racquetball, they have lunch, they have the retired groups, the... I think they call it the Gray Squad or something like that. But, all the years of dedication, Don, and we've had our conversations about the litigation here, the litigation there, and you've got that balance between that law enforcement perspective, where you've worked in the LAPD, and from the city attorney's perspective. I had no idea that you had that many years of service, because since I've known you, you haven't aged. You maintain that level. See, when people lose their hair, they don't age. They stay at that level, which I think is a positive thing, Don. But, seriously, congratulations to you and your family. Retirement, well, well-deserved, and I'm sure you'll stay active. I had no idea that you fought cancer, but it just shows the strength and the courage that you have. Whatever the battle is, you're sitting there and you're ready to fight it. So, God bless you in the future. Many, many happy years of retirement to you and your family.
Thank you, Councilor.
Mr. Labange.
No, Don, I want to thank you. First, I want to say I'm glad you're retiring at 51 years, because if you worked another five, we'd have to do another bridge like Henry P. Rio, so you could connect City Hall with City Hall East. But also, what you said about the people that you work with, you never know. But, look around at all those faces right there, all those city attorneys who've worked so hard on cases and staff support to represent the city. I love when... I love city employees, but I also love when they work together and integrate in their roles and having the experience in the police department and then coming over to the city attorney's office and just fighting for the city's interest, you know, fighting for the city's interest. And God bless you for fighting cancer, too, which is a number-one killer, but you fought through it, and you got the strength to fight through it. I'm sure the family and people who you work with gave you that support. So, have a great retirement, and if you need anything from me, just call me, and I want to let you know the observatory's free. You don't even have to pay to get in there, so go up and look at the stars, because you're one of them. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Our next presentation will be made by a council member from the Sixth District, Councilmember Tony Cardenas.
I'd like to invite the Professional Community Intervention Training graduates and the members of the institution to come forward, please. Thank you very much. Today, we are honoring the 34 graduates from the PCITI, representing 17 different neighborhoods throughout Los Angeles. The Brian Center Executive Director of Better L.A... excuse me, Brian Center, who's the executive director of Better L.A., and Akil Bashir from Maximum Force Enterprises is joining us as well. The first step to accountability starts with the individual. Ladies and gentlemen, we are here today to honor the first graduating class of the PCITI, the Professional Community Intervention Training Institute. Two years ago, Bo Taylor and Akil Bashir approached me about putting together an intervention academy that would create a system of accountability and professional standards and protocols for gang interventionists. Most importantly, there was an interest to provide services that went above and beyond the scope of work and training currently funded by the city of Los Angeles. Classroom exercises and theory were not enough. For over 20 years, there has been a severe problem in providing practical, real-life scenario training and uniform instruction for gang intervention specialists. Through the PCITI, gang interventionists now have the checks and... Through the PCITI, gang interventionists now have the checks and balances to improve the quality of services and ensure that the interventionists are prepared and ready to address the myriad and the number of problems they may encounter in the community. Created by Maximum Force Enterprises with the assistance of USC football coach Pete Carroll's A Better L.A., the PCITI convened an 18-week intensive training institute that focused on gang intervention, prevention, crisis response, and community education and safety. In addition, the PCITI has MOUs and partnerships with the Los Angeles Public Defender's Office, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, the Los Angeles Police Department, the Los Angeles County Probation, Los Angeles City Attorney's Office, Recreation and Parks, and the Los Angeles City Fire Department. Maximum Force has raised the bar, not only training gang interventionists, but also our city's emergency responders, our firefighters. Through a collaboration with the fire department, Maximum Force has trained every firefighter in South Los Angeles, with plans to expand the training to the entire department. This is a collaboration at its best, training street-level intervention workers and emergency responders to work together in achieving peace in our neighborhoods. Before I ask the executive director of the Training Institute and the graduates to speak, I'd like to ask if Brian Center of Better L.A. to provide a few remarks on behalf of Coach Pete Carroll.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Just wanted to say a few remarks at how proud we are to be associated with this. It's just been fantastic. So we funded the Training Institute and said, "Akil, go do your thing," and I'm so proud of what he did and Maximum Force did and what all the graduates have done. What's captured our imagination at the Better L.A. is the idea that intervention workers have accomplished such amazing things in the past with nothing, with no support, no money, no training. It's just a lot of people, many of whom are ex-gang members, who just turned their lives around and said, "I was creating this chaos, I want to solve it now." And they're saving lives, they're reaching out to current gang members to talk about respect and peace, and we said, "Wow, if they're doing that with nothing, what could they do if they had support and salaries and training and accountability and standards?" And I think we've seen the answer to that, we started to see the answer to that, that over the last few months, what amazing things these guys have done with a little bit of support. They've transformed parks, they're a big part of the fabric of the record lows and homicides in the city, they've really woven themselves into the fabric of big solutions for LA. And so we're just getting started, this is just the beginning, but what a fantastic beginning to have this group, who now is professionally trained and will continue to be trained, and has formed this network of people who can reach out all over the city to each other if something is going on. And a lot of the violence is about relationships, it's about disputes, it's about rumors, it's about pettiness, and communication and relationships is a huge part of solving these problems. And this group right here is a huge step in the right direction to solve those problems. So thank you very much, and thank you, Tony, for being such a leader and being such a big part of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one other council member, Mr. Rosendahl.
If I could, Mr. President, I don't want to interrupt the program that Mr. Cardenas is doing, but I just want to say this, that first responders, you're the first responders when it comes to issues in the community that are the gang issues, and it is an incredible service you provide for all of us. The connection between issues that are so significant, and most of us don't know how to get near it and how to deal with it, and I think your help with the firefighters, and I just saw Chief Fry out there, who was here in part to honor it, I just want to do a shout-out to everybody yesterday that was in a coordinated effort in the fires that we had on the edge of my district there that almost hit Mountain Gate and Bundy Canyon, you know, and Mandeville Canyon. And, you know, they, first responders, the firefighters, getting the training from you to do that work is awesome, and thank you for all you do for the city. Thank you.
Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I just wanted to rise to say how, you know, I'm really proud. It makes me think that Bo is looking down at us and really smiling, because I know so many of us were at his going-home celebration. I can't say enough for what you guys have done for me. I got three of my guys, they're here, I got Skip in the back with his Bluetooth on, and Shell Dog. This is the first time that Shell Dog has ever dressed like everybody else, because he has his own style and his own flair. And one of my best friends in this business, I've known since 1987, T. Rogers. Akil, thank you for everything that you do, and, you know, this is the first class, the first graduating class, so I'm sure you'll provide the guidance to the young brothers and sisters that follow you. I'm just darn proud of you, and, boy, I just wish Bo was standing on the other side of T. right now, I just do.
Sorry, we have one more, Ms. Hahn.
I just wanted to run back in here and just give my congratulations to the first class that is really finally setting the bar, setting the standard on what we want intervention work to look like, to behave like, to encourage others to go into this very, very dangerous work. You all have been doing the work for a long time, we know that. Not everybody knows that, but there are some of us who do know that. And now we finally have a legitimate way to really send you forth, send you forth into the streets to prevent the violence from happening in the first place. And we applaud you, and I really want to give a shout-out to my colleague, Tony Cardenas.
Yes.
I really do.[1012.25][1012.25](Applause). You know, I always have the passion for this work, I always have the vision for this work, but I don't have sometimes the patience for the detail of this work. Tony Cardenas does, I think he has it for all of us. But Tony has been able to take this issue painstakingly through his committee on the AdHoc Committee on Gang Violence, and work with the providers, work with all of you, work with you to come up with language, and once it has language and once it's a policy, then we really can, we're going to be able to see the fruits of your labor, Tony, and all of your labor for many, many years to come. Congratulations, we're going to look back on this. We are going to look back on this moment in the city of Los Angeles and in our history, and know that this was the moment that we finally began to recognize those who have been doing the work for so long, and again, encourage this work to continue to go on. Be nice someday if we didn't need the work that you do, but I'm not sure in a city as diverse as Los Angeles, with so many competing interests as Los Angeles, that your work will ever not be needed. But thank you for what you do, you've saved lives, you've saved lives, and you've allowed peace, you've allowed peace to take place in communities and neighborhoods so that long-term peace could be established. So thanks for what you do. My salute to all of you, and particularly to Tony Cardenas.
We've got a couple more that have popped up, Mr. Weezer and Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. I just quickly want to stand up and again, thank all of you for the wonderful work you do, and God bless you all. We know how tough it is out there. I myself grew up in a neighborhood that did have a lot of gangs, we know that sometimes it's not easy to walk out there, and especially to try to calm a situation down. That's probably one of the most toughest things anyone can do, because anything can happen, it's very volatile, but you're out there doing that work, and we depend on you. In my district as well, there's been a number of situations where we've had an incident, and if it wasn't for the interventionists, things could have gotten a lot worse, there could have been a lot more lives lost. So thank you for everything you do. And I said at the last council meeting, thank you, Mr. Cardenas, I sat with you through the AdHoc Youth Development and Anti-Gang Committee, and the work you did to create a model that I said last council meeting, I think it's going to be copied throughout the rest of the United States, because a lot of effort was put into it, and it really could allow us to see results from the hard work that happens every day by the people who are standing with you here today. So thank you very much. Thank you.
And Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to rise and also thank you, and like what Sebysar, and like Tony, like John Perry, we represent districts that have intense gang violence, intense poverty, intense pressures, and this city has to find a way to create a different structure that addresses how we create relief and how we find a solution. And you're a very important piece of that puzzle. We haven't found that solution yet, but we're trying to change how this city looks at this issue, where it's not just, as I've said before, a public relations, good-feel moment, but it's a real change, and it begins with jobs. I know when you're out there and you're working with kids, young people and families, and you see the desperation, the poverty, what do we have to offer? What do we have to offer? Not much today, but hopefully our own contracts will become a source of jobs for our kids, our Dumbarton Water and Power, our airport, our harbor, our own city family with our contracts will be able to deliver jobs, and that's something that will hopefully support your hard work. But in the meantime, you're in the fire, you're staying strong, and I thank you for that, because I know just how difficult that is. Thank you so much, and thank you, Tony, for your hard work.
And Mr. Alacon and Mr. Labange as well would like to add their good wishes. Very popular presentation, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Alacon?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention that Bo Taylor was a very special individual, and yet he was somebody who recognized that there was a need for continuous improvement as an individual, as a community. He had a unique style and a unique approach, and brought a dynamic personality to whatever he did, but there was a method to his madness. And to be able to, you know, so many leaders emerge on their charisma and on their personality, but to be able to capture their method, at the same time, try to develop passion in people, to do the kind of work that you are seeking to do against all odds, is, I think, the epitome of extending the legacy of Bo Taylor. He would have wanted to improve on his own performance, and not just count the numbers of people who would be interested in following his footsteps in terms of the intervention community, but to understand that you constantly have to question yourself about what you're doing and to improve. And that's what the training, I think, will allow to occur. And if we could multiply Bo Taylor by 25, that would be a good thing for Los Angeles, at least the last version of Bo Taylor, not the first, or the middle version of Bo Taylor, we should say. But he was a tremendous person, and because of your commitment and your energy and your passion, and now your skills, you will be able to extend his legacy, and in doing so, save lives in Los Angeles, and more importantly, create productivity where there was harm. And so I wish you well, I encourage you, I support you. Tony, thank you for recognizing this group. Bo and I had the opportunity to drive the streets of South Central at 3:00 in the morning and actually visit bars and Jordan Downs and everywhere else, but I know that it's tough work, and you got to be ready when the person is ready to be attended to, and so we wish you well, God bless you, and God bless Bo Taylor. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Thank you for your leadership. I think each of us around here, at different times, step up to do great things, and you're stepping up great, Tony, to bring people together, to give them access to City Hall. This morning, when Mayor Vera Gosa was in here, we were honoring Native American Month, and the mayor reflected on times that we didn't honor the Native people here long before us. Your presence here is long overdue in integrating the opportunity we have to make change and to bring hope to people, because nothing's worth about a city when it claims a title as a gang capital of the world. And your work is very difficult, and I stand to help in any way that I can, and thank you again, and also for A Better Los Angeles and Coach Pete Carroll, who understands young people better than most, to be able to integrate this all for the good of our challenges in Los Angeles. I thank you, and please call on me if I could help you. Thank you.
Thank you all, council members. We'll return to Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Before I introduce Akil Bashir, Mr. President, I apologize for taking a little bit more time, but I have to say something, and it just dawned on me as I was getting ready to introduce Akil. A lot of people thanked me for my efforts on this issue, and it just dawned on me right now why I took up this issue when I was in the state legislature and I continue to take on this issue now. My father had a first-grade education, and as he saw his 11 children go to college and get bachelor's degrees and master's degrees and doctorate degrees, we used to come back and work for him. He was a gardener, and it was inevitable that we would walk right into it. We'd go up to him and we'd say, "How are we going to get this done?", because he would give us something to do. And we were adults with our degrees and stuff, helping out our father, and he would say, "Why don't you go grab an encyclopedia and figure out how to do it?" And then we would look at him and say, "I'm not going to find that answer in some book", we'd walk right into it. And my father, with a first-grade education, would say, "That's right," and he would show us how to do it. I thought of that as I was getting ready to introduce Akil Bashir, and as I heard the comments about Bo Taylor, about two human beings who didn't learn what they know out of an encyclopedia, but have done something unprecedented. They put that street work, that street understanding, that critical component that we've been missing for so long in our society, together and created this institution. I'm so proud of them. I think that that is what makes this country great, that we are still willing to look beyond titles, lofty titles, we're still willing to look beyond what is, we consider the norm and the right answer, and keep looking for the right answer wherever the truth lies. this is an institution unlike any other, and you're right, I think they're going to try to duplicate it around the country, but here in Los Angeles, we're going to keep refining it and improving it to make sure that as a result, we save more and more lives every single day, and we reduce the violence, and we can all look at each other proudly and say, "We did it right." So with that, Akil Bashir.
In the name of God, I must say that, because this was God-driven. My hats off to Councilman Tony, Councilman Wesson, Councilwoman Hahn, because I know they've been diligent in backing and supporting this work, and also to all the council, because you guys have stayed on focus, you stayed in support of this, you stayed, you could have easily let it go, by the way, Si, but you stayed. You said you need refinement, you said we need protocol. Okay, we put that together for you. I need to say this, I'm not going to speak long, you guys heard me talk Wednesday, you don't need to hear me talk again, but I have to give my hats off to those individuals in here who have been extremely supportive. Also, Ed Hullett and Mike De La Roche, who are not here, they've been diligent in this effort also. The reason I don't want to take much time, because I am extremely proud today, I am proud of this group that is standing behind me. See, I have much love and respect for them, because we've been doing this work together for 10, 20, 30 years, but see, I know what they went through through that 16-week course, I know because I taught it. But, I mean, the focus, the diligently, and more importantly, being out on the streets, doing this type of work, let me give you a little story, you know, doing the work, you're out there 2:00 in the morning, you come home, you did a good job, the wife's waiting for you at the door, she says, "Out with the boys again, huh?", and you look, she only knew. She said, "Now, you taking care and trying to save everybody else's life, but there's no milk in the icebox. The kids are hungry, they need shoes on their feet." And these are the type of scenarios that you have to embrace, because you understand you have to do the work, this is not a choice. This is not a choice. It is a mandated responsibility. I'll give my respects to my father, who was the man who mentored me and guided me. He was the first black fireman for the County of Los Angeles back in 1956. And he told me... He was tremendous in what he done. He used to give me his shoes all the time. I didn't understand what he was doing. He says, "When you can fit them, Akil, you know you're ready." Okay, I'm still trying to fit them, okay? And with that, though, the people behind me, very rarely do I get the chance to really let them know how much I care about them, how much I love them and support them. And they have done an outstanding job. We have another class starting in November. We have 150 people already to go in that, and they are going to be part leaders in that class. The reason I'm going to stop my time, a few of them do want to come before you and say a few things, and I think I should give my time up to them if I can. Thank you for all your work. Thank you for your support. Thank the councilmen. I thank you, Tony, tremendously. Councilman Weston, Councilman Han, for your diligence on this. And we're in it to win it. We refuse to lose. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to give, Mr. President, we'd like to give at least one of the classmates here an opportunity to step up and say a little bit about what they learned and what it means and whether or not it's going to help them in the future when they do the wonderful work that they do on the streets of Los Angeles. Who's going to step up?
How you guys doing? My name is Alejandro. I work for Home Is Unidos. I've been doing this work for over 10 years, and I am committed for life to save lives every day. PCITI has actually trained my thoughts in a way that I'm able now to put everything in certain procedures using protocol, learning how to actually assess situations and be more aware of my surroundings and also document accountability for every rollout that we do. I have disciplined myself now. I have raised the bar now. This is what I do, like a doctor saves lives, a police officer saves lives, also I save lives. I have raised the bar. Now I want the city to raise the bar also with us and pay us like we deserve. Because just like a police officer will come into these rooms and somebody took us hostage and would risk his life, I'm risking my life every day to save this life and keep the crime down in Los Angeles County. So I want you guys to recognize that because my job is not easy. When I get home sometimes, guess what? My kids are asleep and I hardly get to see them sometimes. But I'm dedicated because I know how it is to be without resources. Home Is Unidos has been the first nonprofit organization that's been lifted in the Pico Union area since I've been living in the city in 30 years. Thank you.
Good morning, City Council members of the chamber. My name is Chavella Quinn, and I'm the first elected captain of PCITI. I want to take a few moments to say thank God for all of us being here this morning and read a few things to show my gratitude. Excuse me. It's a great day in the city of Los Angeles. We're here today to honor and recognize the founding members of the inaugural class of the Professional Community Intervention Training Institute. I'm glad today to know that the community has been in need of real service from actual practitioners in their prospective communities, from the best who have just been trained by Maximal Force Enterprises and along with the Fire Department's best. I am proud to say that I know I've been trained for the last 16 weeks on standard operating procedures and guidelines. I've been certified in CPR and physical abatement. I now know how to make incident reports and assess and analyze crises before I take action. I know my ETA, my estimated time of arrival and my estimated time of departure. But in conclusion, what I really want to say is thank you to Mr. Akil Bashir for creating this powerful entity that the city of Los Angeles needed to see be erected. The call has gone out, and the dedicated lives of individuals in 17 different neighborhoods answered the call. And they are here to serve and make a difference and have chosen to put a stop to violence in their communities and effectively save lives and protect the lives of children who deserve a chance to walk to school in a safe environment and be able to live their lives and see dreams and their aspirations come into fruition. I'm also pleased to see the level of professionalism in a group of individuals that some people may have doubted but have risen to the occasion. So I'm just letting you know that we're here, PCITI, we're here to stay. We're a sound and professional group of individuals who are putting their lives on the line every day. And I want to extend a great gratitude to the Fire Department, LAPD, the DA's office, Bo Taylor, and Mr. Akil Bashir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Leading members of the council, I'm here to represent PCITI. My name is Miguel Robinson. I'm a long-term, longtime hardcore gang interventionist. But I'm not here to say what we've done in the course and all that because I decided to just thank you guys. This is the first time in my long time doing this work that the city councils actually step up the way you guys stepped up with us. You guys really been in the trenches, you guys come up out behind, you guys been from behind them, Bessis, you've been in the neighborhoods with us and you've been making things happen. So I'd like to thank you guys first and foremost. Secondly, I'd like to thank my religious leaders, Elijah Muhammad, Pastor Tony Nelson, Pastor Logan, and Pastor Oldham. I'd like to say, when we go through this course, everyone likes to say courses and courses and training. But training and course is something that you get out of something that what people put into it. But if people's not putting into something, what are you going to get out of it? We're living in a time now where everybody wants us to have courses and trainings to get money for it. But if you're graduating people that's not getting nothing, it's not going to change nothing. For the first time, I've been to a course and I've gotten something out of this course, some tangible and practical that we can use in our communities in order to change things. And I hate to borrow the vice or the future president's words, but it's time for a change. And this is what we're trying to do. And with the support of the city council behind us, we can step up and prove to the world what South Central LA is about and how we make a change. So with that, I'm going to release my portal and say, "Thank you for being there and let's all work together."
Thank you, Councilmember Cardenas, and thank you to the graduates as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And once again, this is an unprecedented day for this country, and we should be very proud that Los Angeles has been a part of this wonderful institution, a first of its kind, one of a kind, and an institution that's going to grow and prosper on behalf of the people of Los Angeles and beyond. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you very much. And congratulations, everybody.
And this is their proclamation. And I don't know if you're going to cut it up in a bunch of pieces or what have you or put it over at the institute, but this is well-deserved and well-earned and something that should be hung proudly at your institution for all the wonderful work you've done and you will do for the people of Los Angeles. So thank you so much.
We'll go in the back and take a picture.
Lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't say to and for one of my closest friends that was in this struggle with me over 16, 17 years, and that was Brother Bo Taylor. And the reason this had to be completed was because of Bo. This belongs to Bo and this belongs to the PCICI. So I want to give them all a hand.
Our next presentation is Councilmember Bill Rosendahl from the 11th District.
Apologize for taking a minute or two, but I was shaking the hands of those great folks that just graduated from that class, which is a major, major historic step forward. I would like to ask the Reverend Elder Troy Perry and the group sitting here to come on and stand next to me. You know? And Philip Ray de Bleek, where's Philip Ray de Bleek? Right there, his partner, right over here. You guys stand right there as I start and the other guys come on close. Ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, this is a very historic moment for the gay community. Forty years ago, forty years ago, the Reverend created and developed the Metropolitan Community Church. Troy Perry has devoted his life to helping others discover the loving and caring God to whom he has committed his life. As founder of the predominantly gay Metropolitan Community Churches, he has watched the membership grow from the first 12 members in 1968 to over 43,000 during the past 40 years and has guided MCC's growth into one of the world's largest gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender organizations. MCC was the first church to recognize the need to minister to the needs of gays, lesbians, bisexual, and transgender people throughout the world. Reverend Perry was the first openly gay person to serve on the Los Angeles County Commission on Human Relations. He owes an honorary degrees and other degrees from the Episcopal Divinity School in Boston, the Samaritan College in Los Angeles, and the Sierra University in Santa Monica, and was honored by the Gay Press Association with this humanitarian award. Reverend Perry was invited to the White House in 1977 by the administration of President Jimmy Carter to discuss gay and lesbian civil rights and was appointed by the U.S. President Bill Clinton as the official delegate to the White House Conference on Hate Crimes and the White House Conference on AIDS. Reverend Perry has truly been an international leader in the quest for marriage equality for gays and lesbians. In 1969, he performed the first public same-sex wedding in the United States. And in 1970, he filed the first-ever lawsuit seeking legal recognition for same-gender marriages. For 39 years, Reverend Perry, and is actually now 40, has fought for the right of same-gender couples to marry. And he organized and led demonstrations for marriage equality at the last three marches on Washington for the LGBT rights. On July 16, 2003, the Reverend Perry and his husband, Philip Ray de Bleek, right here, who at the time worked together for 18 years, were legally married under Canadian law in Toronto, Canada. Six months after that ceremony, they and two long-term friends of theirs, Robin Tyler and Diane Olson, became the first couples to sue for the right of the same-gender couples to marry in the state of California and to have Canadian same-sex marriages legally recognized in California. You've heard me say that. Robin Tyler and Diane Olson are our Rosa Parks, who have said they're not going to be in the back of the bus anymore when it comes to our basic civil and human rights. On May 15, 2008, the California Supreme Court ruled in their favor, deciding that it was unconstitutional to deny same-gender couples the right to marry. You know, folks, we got Measure 8 on the ballot. You've got to vote no on that. In 2005, the Reverend Perry retired as the moderator of the Metropolitan Community Churches. In his retirement, he maintains an active speaking schedule lecturing on the history of gay rights and movements, HIV issues, and marriage equality. And I was saying to the Reverend Perry before we got up here that in the mid-'80s through the mid-'90s, when hundreds of thousands of our brothers died of AIDS, there were many churches that rejected us. And his church became a healing spiritual experience for us as we suffered our loved ones. And the gay people know that it comes from nature. It isn't a choice and it isn't a preference. It's nature. And we also know that God created nature. And we also know that God makes no mistakes. So for the gay community, this has been our first leader that has given us the respect, in God's name, for who we are and our orientation and nature. It is a great honor for me to ask Troy Perry to say a few words. And Reverend, this is signed by the mayor, the city attorney, and all my colleagues around the horse.
And just before that, Mr. Rosendahl, we've got a number of colleagues that would like to add their good wishes as well. Mr. Reyes, and then Ms. Han, and then Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Council President. Well, thank our colleague, Bill Rosendahl, for presenting to us such a significant person in these historic times, Reverend Perry, to establish the Metropolitan Community Church. And to be able to share with this society the power of love and what love means for us as communities truly is a reflection of the kind of power we can have together in changing the quality of life, not only for adults but for children. I have many friends who are essentially raising children, who are married, same-gender. And the kids are beautiful. They're happy. They're going to great schools. They're well-clothed. What's wrong with that? And so I thank you for allowing that opportunity. I thank you for opening up some eyes. And hopefully those who have a hard time understanding can look into the eyes of children and the eyes of couples and say, "Thank you," because all you're doing is sharing your love. Thank you so much.
Ms. Han.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank our colleague, Bill Rosendahl, for allowing us to all honor Reverend Perry, still this morning, almost. And as Ed said, truly, you know, this is such a special time in, I think, all of our collective histories. And I do believe that long-held feelings are beginning to turn, and we do realize the value of every single human being. And I was just listening to your story and listening to all that you've done. And certainly, you are a man of courage, of real courage. It takes courage to, you know, speak where others have been silent. It takes courage to reach out to people who others have discarded and disrespected. And for you to have started this Metropolitan Community Church at a time when it was not popular or was not embraced really speaks to your calling and your courage. And we know that God is love, and we know that what you represent is unconditional love. And oh, if that message was not, could not be taught a hundredfold in our communities and in our nation, what a great place we would be. So congratulations. We're very honored to honor you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you, Bill, for bringing in such a great individual here, someone who has changed the way we think about gay couples. And certainly, you were the one, Reverend, who reminded America that gay couples also can be spiritual. It's a very important message to get out there. Since the Supreme Court made the right decision to allow gay couples to marry, I since married three couples. And it was just a beautiful sight to see the joy some of these couples who have been dating, if you want to call it that, for the last 20, 25 years, for them to now legally say that they are a married couple. And the emotion at that wedding, those weddings, was just spectacular. And we're bringing happiness to many individuals who love one another. It was a beautiful thing to see. So my hat's off to you, Reverend. Thank you for all the work you do. You are a courageous person. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I was on Hollywood Boulevard yesterday, Troy. And there at the corner of McAden, there's this nice sign, huh? Pretty nice sign there for you, for all, and the work that you've done over the years. And I'm proud that the church is in my district now on Franklin Avenue. I'm proud of a woman that I love, Reverend Haynes, and her involvement in the church. I'm proud of the fight, the struggle that everyone goes through. And today, we had a variety of people in this council chamber, starting with our mayor and hosting the Native American Month just recently when Mr. Cardenas spoke of the great gang intervention workers. And a lot of people never always have been here, but now we're about Los Angeles, which is all about people. And you're one of the icons of Los Angeles, which you won't ever admit to, but you are because you were the leader. You were the leader, working with Peggy Stevenson 35 years ago on issues of equality, which are so important. So I'm proud to call you a friend. I always love seeing you. I'm proud of the new pastor up there over your left shoulder there, but he has a little accent and doesn't understand American football, but I teach him a little of that from time to time. And Mr. Rosendahl, I'm proud of you. I'm proud of you for all that you've done for many, many people, given opportunity and a voice, because that is really what the world is all about, welcoming people, understanding people, and having love for people, and then that we all be tolerant of each other. So congratulations for the church and everybody that's involved, and especially you, Mr. Rosendahl, for your good efforts every day. Rosendahl, for your good efforts every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and to the Reverend, you have been an incredible asset to the city and have, our paths have crossed over many, many years, and what you have done is, I think as many of my colleagues have talked about, the importance of religion and acceptance and no form of discrimination, whether it be on marriage, ethnicity, sexual orientation, and you have just led the way, and I know probably with a lot of criticism from people who have more hate in them than they do about what is, the world should be like. And so I want to thank you for not only doing what you do in your church, but how you've used that to be a greater civic responsibility and understanding, and joining my colleagues and congratulating you, and a thank you, Bill, for bringing him here today. I know this is a special day for you as well, to be able to honor him as a city council member and as a friend. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruehl, and I'll just add my final good wishes to you, Troy, for being such an angel here in this city. You are somebody who has consistently been a voice a long time ago in the wilderness, but now squarely in the center of this city and embraced by a city that embraces the same gospel that you preach and the same way that we embrace the idea that everybody here in this city has equal standing before God and equal standing before their government as well. The two, while we separate them somewhat in the formal proceedings of our government, we know that as people, that we live our lives trying to reach out to our brothers and sisters increasingly, and you can't turn back that history. There are bumps along the way, there are still other road bumps that we see ahead of us, but we know that progress every year has been made, not because people suddenly woke up and saw it, but because there were warriors like yourself who had the courage to stand, to build, to organize, and that is really the lasting legacy of what you have done. And it is not just with LGBT issues, but it's with justice issues and peace issues. You have been a true voice and a true angel in this city. So congratulations, and it's a great joy to have you here today.
It's all you.
I'm a real good speaker, but this, today, I'm nervous. I'm going to read just a quick little statement and to thank all of you. First, I give thanks to God for letting me live to celebrate the 40th anniversary of the founding of the Metropolitan Community Churches. I founded the church October 6, 1968, in the Los Angeles area. Second, I want to thank God for this wonderful city of Los Angeles, which I've had the honor and the privilege to live in for the past 46 years. Third, I wish to thank old friends who made a difference in this city for the GLBT community, city council members Bob Stevenson, Peggy Stevenson, Joel Wax, Mayor Tom Bradley, and many others who made a difference. I'm not going to name everyone, but you know who you are. Thank you, Councilman Bill Rosenthal, who remembered this anniversary and my work and made it possible to be honored here today. To my husband, Philip de Bleek, who has been my partner in human rights struggles for the past 23 years and continues to be my helpmate in the right-to-marriage fight within the state of California. Again, thanks to all the members of the city council for this great, great honor. I love this city. We don't cure discrimination necessarily on the streets, it ends up here, and I want to thank all of you who have had the courage over the years. I know you with AIDS, the last time I was here with the AIDS memorial that was going up in East LA and coming down. I used to come down a lot, but thank you all. You all I know and I appreciate. Thank God for this city, because you continue to make a difference for all the citizens of this city, not some, but all of us. Thank you so much.
Mr. Wesson. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Reverend, I can relate to the struggles that you've had to deal with your entire life, and you're right, it's such an honor and a pleasure to sit on this body. Individuals that on this council believe that the winds in this country blow from the west to the east, so we don't have a problem in setting an example and trying to send a message to the rest of the world. Also, we recognize that there are civil rights struggles that affect everyone, and that no one is safe until everyone is safe, and no one is free until everyone is free. So I think I just wanted to rise to commend you for all of the work that you've done over the years. I know that it's been difficult. I know that there's probably been times when you wanted to stop, but then something from up above said, "Just take one more step, give one more sermon, just talk to one more person." And I think if you reflect back and you look at where we were 30, 40 years ago, and here we are, where on the verge of making history a week from Tuesday, maybe we will see the realization of Dr. King's dream where individuals will be judged based on their deeds and their actions and not the color of their skin. And then maybe on that Tuesday, California will have the courage to send a message that will, you know, go all throughout this country saying that it's not who you love or where you love, the most important thing is that you love. So it's a pleasure. I'm glad to be a Los Angelino with you. So congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you. Congratulations. And our next presentation is by, you want to speak on this matter?
Yes, I just wanted to introduce a group of people that are visiting us here today. I'd like to welcome some special guests to see Los Angeles. These individuals joined us from Korea. Please, like to stand, please. First, I'd like to welcome members of the Korean Culture Center here in Los Angeles for hosting our special guest, Mr. Kyeong Duck Lee, president of the Korean Cultural Center, Mr. Jim Young Lee, director of business development, the KCC. A very warm welcome to Mr. Young Bang Kim, advisor to the president of Korea, and to Mr. Reverend Chang Gun Kim, our pastor. Please stand. You're welcome to stand.
Please stand. Please stand, our guest from Korea, Mr. He-Man Two.
And the city of Los Angeles welcomes you. We hope you enjoy your stay.
Welcome.
I'd like to thank Christine Lee, who is from my district, for a lot making this happen. Congratulations. Thank you for joining us, and I hope you enjoy here in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next presentation, Mr. Wesson, with his little sidekick.
Thank you, Mr. President and members, and to our visitors from Korea. I say "Anya" and I say "yo," so welcome, welcome. Today is one of my favorite days. It's pet adoption Friday, and we have Teresa here from Channel 7, who came down to participate in the opening of, Sarah, or the second presentation that we had today, Indian American Heritage Month. She didn't know that she would fall in love with Julie here. Now, is she not beautiful? So we have to be concerned, Ju, I mean, Teresa may be afraid to come back to LA because there might be another dog, but to all of the people that watch this on Channel 35, this little dog was darling. She's almost four years old. She is a, I'm gonna let you say it.
She's a Shih Tzu, a purebred Shih Tzu.
Now, members, I did not want to touch that.
You want to spell that one out?
I did not want to touch that, so I didn't, but that is exactly what she said, is what Julie is. And Julie has a great home now with Teresa. And I know that there are people, again, out on Channel 35 that are going, "Oh, my God, that was a perfect dog for me. I wish I could have adopted her." I mean, she's a lapdog. She is a darling. But we have shelters throughout the great city of Los Angeles, and if you'd like to go and try to get a companion animal like Julie, all you have to do is call 888-452-7381. So Teresa, I want to let you, you're the new mom, I'm gonna let you say a little something.
Well, thank you so much, Councilwoman Hurd-Wesson. I was here, like you said, to representing ABC 7 for the American Heritage Indian Month, and of course, you know, I just went back to talk to our cameraman, Edon, and the next thing I know is I was networking with Julie. And I'm just very happy that I've been given the opportunity. I think timing is everything in life, and I have a 15-year-old Tawchewawa at home who is blind, deaf, and very elderly, and I was not allowed to get a puppy, so Julie will be a great companion for Cleo. So thank you so much, and I encourage all of you to look for puppies, to look for dogs, because there's a lot of them in the shelter, and they need good homes. Garth Kemp does a segment for pet adoption every week, and I can't tell you how many calls we get, so Garth will be very happy to know that Julie is going home with me. So thank you so much.
Garth will say you had to come to City Hall to get the dog. You had to come to City Hall. And our congratulations to ABC 7, also Arnie Kleiner, your great president over there at ABC 7.
And, Mr. President, we still have our 100% adoption rate.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to number 38. Madam Clerk, I know we have public comment, but let's hold on that and go to 38. Ms. Han, I think you have that matter before us.
Thank you. Colleagues, today what we're doing is we're approving an ordinance that will allow LAWA to use other methods of contracting for the reconfiguration and modernization of the Tom Bradley International Terminal, such as design-build. The traditional method of designing, then bidding out for a contractor simply will not work in this case because of our very aggressive deadline that we're trying to meet of January 2012 to build new gates and modernize the Tom Bradley International Terminal. You know, last year, we really began fighting to modernize LAX. We really began to push the green-lighted projects that have stood still for so many years, and because we knew that particularly in tough times, we need to really work to retain the flight industry at LAX and to encourage more airlines to come to LAX. We needed to make sure that our airport was prepared to accommodate the new generation of bigger planes, and we know that the first A380, Qantas Airline, landed this last Monday, and it proved that we are working towards accommodating those larger aircraft by the building of these new gates. You know, LAX is the welcoming map for the city. It's really the first glimpse that visitors get of Los Angeles. Last year, 63 million passengers came through LAX, but you know, when you look at the current condition of the LAX, we know that it's old, it's dilapidated, it's dingy, and anybody that flies around the world, even around this country, knows that there are other airports that really do more to accommodate the visitors, and we want to accommodate these visitors. We want to accommodate tourism. It's the second-largest industry in the city of LA, and we know in tough times, we like those tourists to come to Los Angeles. We want them to spend their dollars, and when they come to LAX, we have a good chance of them continuing to stay in our hotels and eat in our restaurants and shop in our shops. So we want this to happen. But there has been no significant progress at LAX since the opening of the Tom Bradley International Terminal for the Olympics in 1984. It needs to be modernized. We need to have sufficient gates. We need to have the kind of gates that will accommodate the larger aircraft, and we cannot meet the deadline of January 2012 unless we are a little more creative, unless we allow a little more streamlining of the contracting, the designing, and the bidding of these projects to make it happen. The city charter permits the use of different methods to bid out projects, but we need to approve an ordinance to allow that to happen in this specific case, and that's what we're doing today. I urge you to do this. We still will retain our oversight of these projects. We're asking for regular three-month updates to come back to the city council so that we can keep track of what's happening. But I went for myself to Denver last weekend to see the new model and the new design of the LA International Airport. It is great, it's fabulous, and it certainly is worthy of the design for an international gateway. So colleagues, I ask you to approve this. We have the city attorney's approval on this. We have the CAO's recommendation to approve this. This is what we need to do as a major city. We need to build this airport in a way that will accommodate the schedule of the modernization. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank Ms. Han, the chair of the committee, for her leadership on this. Could you all come up for a quick second and ask a few questions? And I know there is some public comment that also wants to be made. You know, most recently, our city comptroller, Laura Chek, talked about how we can get things done, and I will quote her, "The city is not taking advantage of the construction management-at-risk delivery methodology, which has resulted in cost savings on projects." Would you give us a layman's explanation of what we're voting on here today? And introduce yourself.
Yes, Roger Johnson, Deputy Executive Director at Los Angeles World Airport, responsible for the LAX Development Program. What we are asking you to do, as Ms. Han indicated, is to simply allow us to add two additional contracting methods into our toolbox. The one that you mentioned, construction management-at-risk, which is also known as GCCM or General Contracting CM, it allows us to go out and start to construct a job and bid a job on an expedited delivery schedule, not have to wait until we're 100% done with the plans and specs before we go out to bid. It's a very standard delivery method that's being used in California, in Los Angeles, and around the United States today. We are also asking for the flexibility on certain elements of the LAX Development Project to be able to utilize the design-build method if we find inappropriate, if a project requires it to be expedited and use that method, which allows us to shave a significant amount of time and money off the cost of construction.
How does design-build work?
Design-build works best in areas where you do not have complex architectural design. An example that we're considering is building a new central utility plant where it's a functional building. We have to have so many tons of cooling, so many BTUs of heat. We can provide to a design-build firm the functional requirements. They can come in and actually give us a guaranteed not-to-exceed price, complete the design and construction on an expedited schedule.
And, City Attorney, I want to make sure transparency and the process is as open, as transparent, as the sun is shining. Explain how that works in this.
Absolutely. The contracting process for design-build or for construction manager-at-risk has all the same checks and balances. The RFPs will go to the board, they're subject to 245 if the city council chooses. If the contracts are long enough, they'll come here for approval. It's the same contracting process that we would go through through design-bid-build. It's just, in terms of the transparency, in terms of the processing that we will do, and it will all have the same checks and balances that we need.
I appreciate that. And, Ms. Han, I appreciate your leadership, because the timetable and getting things done is so critical, and we're looking at billions of dollars being spent there, and we want to modernize LAX. We want to modernize it now, and your leadership on timetables and report backs is the critical element so that we get things done. We only have a limited time on this earth, and we want to get it done now. We heard a couple of dates that you kind of got them to strongly say. What is the first date we should look at, at something major done?
The first date we're looking at is January of 2012, where we hoped, where we are planning on opening the North Concourse, adding the first new A380 gates to the Tom Bradley Terminal.
And we're looking at a people mover, consolidated rental, a midfield terminal, and the Green Line. There are five green projects going forward. What's the sense of the timetable on some of the others?
The Green Line, the People Mover, all of that is being looked at right now through the specific plan amendment study process. That process hopefully will be done by the end of next year, and unfortunately, I can't give you a solid timeframe, but we'll be able to when that process is done.
Okay, and Mr. Lavange and I were talking about making a hole in the ground and put in three more golf holes for the golf course. What's the sense of when that will happen for Westchester?
We are hoping to have a new golf course operator onboard first quarter of next year or close to the first quarter of next year, and we are planning for them to begin construction immediately after they come onboard.
And we want to thank Gina Marie Lindsay, who was here this morning, who's an expediter and gets things done for her leadership on this project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Rosendahl, we have two other colleagues that wish to speak. We also have two parts in the public. Do you want to, we open the public comment period?
It's up to my colleagues if they would want that at this point.
We have two speakers. Without opposition, we'll...
My time. Give him my time to speak.
Well, we've got two public speakers, so if there's no opposition, we'll open up for public comment. for public comment. Will of the body is to permit that, okay? Let's do two minutes apiece, and then the colleagues, we will hear from you. Arnold Sachs. Denny, you're at the gate, but not yet.
Thank you. I missed this meeting on the transportation, trade, and tourism, but now that I understand, it's amazing how they snuck up with the A380 program throughout the country that it took so long for Lawa to get onboard with modernization. San Francisco did their modernization, they're finished. Other airports did their modernization. You're going to Denver, they're finished. Lawa waited, I think the A380 came out, the plans were like five years old. The expedited schedule that's being asked for, how much more does that add to the cost of the project that was not included in the original estimate? Remember, the city is backing this with two bonds for $1.8 billion. The cost from $3 billion to $10 billion. We heard commentary that there was no funding. Under what rock did they all of a sudden dig out and find $10 billion for funding? What's the status of the Mid-City Concourse? The city council set the date at 2012, when its first bonds came out. Now they're backpedaling because they know that it was unachievable. So how much extra is it going to cost, and where is the funding coming from, to expedite the building for this no-bid contract that all of a sudden were no, are now no-brainers three years after the first conversation started in city council chambers about what to do, about bidding contracts for architects, for designers, for the run-in we had with the problems regarding the offering, the awarding of contracts at Lawa? All transparent, except maybe not so transparent, or maybe transparent like mud. Thank you for your time, your answers, and your attention.
Denny Schneider.
Denny Schneider, Mr. President, council members, many of you have heard me speak many times about the airport as a critic of things that need to be done. I have always been here to tell you that things that make this airport something that we could be proud of, I've always spoken in favor of. We need to do this quickly and efficiently, and I support the objectives of this motion completely. I have some concerns over some of the various projects. I'm working with Lawa management, and they're going to be keeping me appraised on many of these. So without further ado, let's move forward.
Thank you, Denny. Thank you for coming down again. Now we'll go to Telsomar Gruel.
Thank you. I just wanted to stand and support Ms. Hahn and to the airport. We tried this, and we had some challenges in the state when we were doing the 405 carpooling. I don't know if you remember that. And there was a lot of opposition to it, and it ended up really, again, saving money and saving time and a way a project can move forward. And so I'm hoping that as we look to a number of other projects in the city, that we can take into consideration the importance of a design-build. Because when you talk about, tried to explain to people what it meant at the time, we were arguing with some of the state legislatures about the 405 carpooling, and I explained it as, you know, you are going to do some, you know, redo your kitchen at your house, and you have an architect come out and designs it and has no conversation with your contractor at all. Then you have to have someone else who comes out, who, contractor, who has no idea what the architect did, and you're starting all over again rather than having them work together from the beginning. And so I just congratulate you and Ms. Hahn and the committee for moving this forward. Look forward to working on more of these kinds of projects in Los Angeles.
Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, I just want to say, go to work. Go to work, go to work. Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. But thank you, Bill Rosendahl, too, because I think the committee that we have has found consensus in doing what you call modernization, yes, expansion, no. I have modernization, yes, safety, which we all agree on, and as we go forward, and fix those holes in the golf course so they can move forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. This matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Matter passes. Thank you. Congratulations. And fourth with.
Fourth with.
Fourth with is the A380 lands at LAX. Mr. Bill Rosendahl.
Yes, point of order, item 34. I'd like to reconsider that and call that special.
Number 34. Without opposition. Open the roll on 34 reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, we consider 34. And now we're on 35. 35? Madam Clerk, 35, please.
35? There is a card on 35.
35, Mr. Arnold Sachs. And we still have public comment to get to.
Maybe could answer my question. 35, you're looking to provide another special trust fund known as the Council District 10 Public Benefits Trust Fund. On Tuesday, the 28th, you're going to, on your agenda, you have a volunteer trust fund, number 892, which I imagine is good for every council district. There's also a council district, and this is an item on your agenda, seven additional street sweeping trust fund, which I'm sure that every council district has a street sweeping trust fund. Just exactly, could we get an audit of how many special trust funds are available for each council district, what their use is, and what the amount of money is allocated for each one of those funds? We keep hearing that there is a budget deficit in the city approaching $400 million, but there's a trust fund A, and there's a trust fund B, and there's a trust fund C, and there's a trust fund D, and there's a trust fund F, and there's a trust fund E, and there's a trust fund A, G, H, I, J, K, and L. What's the money going into these trust funds, and at what benefit? Then we have the special event funds, which we don't even want to touch this time because I'll talk about that when that comes up on the agenda. But it would be nice for the public to know just how the pie is being sliced up in regards to the special trust funds that's available for every council district, because what's good for one goose is good for the gander, and we know that one council district is not going to give up their trust fund on behalf of another one. Any way of coming up with a mount? Anyone interested in letting the public know? Or maybe it's like Lawa, $10 million falling from the sky? Thank you.
All right, that matter. Mr. Garcetti, number 35. Did you wish to speak on that?
No.
So that matter is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Matter passes. Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, want to reconsider 34. Mr. Rosendahl on 34, and then we'll go to public comment.
I'd like to indulge Ms. Gruel for a second. We went through this in committee, and I just thought in the sunlight of the rest of us, we should hear about the Wilshire bus lane. Could I ask the folks to come up for a quick second who've been here all morning for the wonderful presentations and come to the desk and tell us quickly the update? And colleagues, as we know, the Wilshire bus-only lane is a project that the city has been moving rather quickly in MTA. It shows real cooperation between MTA and DOT. We're in the middle now of an EIR to see, or whatever the phrase is, to see how we put it together. And you know, Ms. Gruel's leadership on this has been immense, and with her leadership, we've been able to take it from nowhere into the beginning of a reality. We did get the federal government to commit monies to this, over $20 million, even in this crazy moment of DC going on. We have money that will be used to make this bus-only lane. What this means, as we think about the mayor's subway to the sea, I want to be alive for that. I know I can definitely be alive to see this bus-only lane happen. That is above ground. It doesn't require that much time and that much money, but it could be an efficient tool on Wilshire Boulevard to move people around on buses. Give us a quick update where we are. Introduce yourself.
Kong Hu with LADOT. We are reporting the progress of the Wilshire Boulevard bus lanes. We've been working pretty hard with MTA to move forward on the environmental process, which is required by the federal transit administrations to fund us to implement the project. We already hired three consultants to start the environmental analysis. We will have four community meetings in November, and we will involve the community about this project and the potential impact. And by next April to next June, we hope to complete the environmental clearance process and then start designing and constructing the project. It will take us two more years to complete the construction.
So as Mr. Labonge knows, the Wilshire corridor is a significant route for all of us, and it cuts through many colleagues' your districts. It's not just an 11th district. It's Mr. Weiss's district, it's Mr. Labonge's district, and there are other members of the council that it goes through, and county property as well. Could I ask MTA to tell us about the partnership and collaboration and how you see it moving, and why we need to do this?
Well, I think...
Introduce yourself, Art.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, sir. Arthur Henry, Metro Government Relations. As we all know, Wilshire Boulevard is one of the most, the most congested corridor in the city of Los Angeles and actually in Los Angeles County. So we move approximately 80,000 boardings a day on Wilshire Boulevard right now. It's a number that is almost as many numbers, as many people as we have in the Metro Light Blue Line, which is the most heavily-used light blue line, light rail line in the United States. So we formed a partnership, working together with the city of LA, to move this project ahead, getting funding from the federal government, and we look forward, as Kong says, to completing the environmental analysis by June of next year and then starting the design and construction after that.
And as we talk, two, three years, complete? Will it be done by then?
We're looking at a construction complete date of June of 2011.
2011 complete date. And how will it work for a person who wants to get on a bus and get downtown?
It would be a similar situation now where we, they can access the service through our rapid, it would be a rapid bus service on Wilshire Boulevard running from downtown through the city of LA, through the city of Beverly Hills and Santa Monica. There's stops about approximately one mile, every mile, we run articulated 60-foot buses for maximum utilization of transferring our passengers. They can, they can access the stops all along Wilshire Boulevard at major intersections.
And is the funding there from the federal government, and how much are we talking about?
There's funding of over $20 million. The FTA is very high in this project. They feel it's very important. They look at us, this project, as being a demonstration. Right now, there's a continuing resolution for this next year that's in effect to March of 2009. We're looking at federal government support. The actual money still has to be allocated by FTA. But our representatives in Washington are pushing very hard on this. FTA is very enthusiastic about the project, and we're anticipating a positive outcome.
Thank you. And thank you both very much for that. And the action is to proceed and accept the funds and move forward with the project. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Henry. Good to see you. This man went to the first game of the New York Metropolitan, the Mets, when he was in New York. Mr. Henry, we're talking about Wilshire Boulevard near Crenshaw West. What's the limits of the project?
From this project, this project is particularly from up to the Westwood, to the, I'm sorry, excuse me, out to the border with Santa Monica.
And from where?
Well, it starts from downtown, downtown Los Angeles.
All the way. So, Mr. Weston, this is our effort here to try to get Wilshire fixed. We've been working hard. Mr. Weston's working very hard. The potholes are bigger than the potholes you see in the pictures of Mars at the observatory, and we got to get them fixed soon. So we're really pushing this project. Do you know what time, what timeframe we're going to have on this section of Wilshire, which would be the West, Wilshire, the Crenshaw to Highland area?
Well, the payment repair would be the number one priority after the environmental clearance is done. We hope we can start construction in August of 2009 if the funding is secure and also the environmental clearance is done.
Great. Well, Mr. Weston and I want to see a lot of focus on that section because of the horrible condition of the roadway. Thank you very much, Mr. Henry, and also our representative from DOT, Mr. Zine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. And that matter is now before us. Open the roll. And, Mr. Reyes? I'm sorry, didn't recognize you.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate your diligence up there.
Thank you. I thought, I thought the screen was clear. Go ahead. My apology.
I did want to ask the impacts, Wilshire coming into MacArthur Park, identities change, you have ridership, you have transit dependencies that are going through the roof in terms of numbers, rides, in terms of transit dependent ridership. Can you speak to the impact of this project in those communities around MacArthur Park?
I think, I think the value of this project is having the bus-only lane facilitates travel through the corridor for people all along the corridor, including those around Westlake, MacArthur Park. What I will do is reduce travel times. I think one of the things we have right now is that Wilshire is a congested corridor, and having a dedicated bus lane will allow people who use the service to have a more expedited trip. I think that'd be the greatest value that we see. And one of the values would be then, giving our existing buses, we can actually, in effect, provide more service because a bus can make the trip more quickly having a dedicated bus lane, which allows using the same amount of trip to essentially run more frequent service with the same amount of buses because they get from one end to the other quicker.
Yeah, another major benefit would be the reliability of the service. Once we have the dedicated lane, the buses don't have to suffer the traffic delays as other traffics do. Therefore, not just the travel time will be improved, but also the reliability, the service will be more predictable, and people will like to ride on transit.
Well, in my first year at UCLA, I actually took the bus all the way down Wilshire, and I knew every bus stop. It took me a good two and a half hours to get from Seventh and Spring on the 83, the old 83, all the way down Wilshire to Westwood. And so it is very obvious, as you travel through Wilshire, you see the different phases of Los Angeles, also the different economic conditions. So the actual stops in which this project is proposing were the stops picked based on the ridership amount of people getting on the bus? How were these stops defined? Was it to expedite the headway so that you can have longer headways, you can have a quicker route? What was the logic there?
As, the Wilshire system now, line 720 and 920 are part of the rapid bus system, and the theory was to have an expedited trip where the bus route would emulate a rail line. So the stops would be like three-quarters of a mile to a mile apart. And the determining factors were spacing those stops and also identifying the activity centers, if you will, where there's a lot of people, there's a lot of employment, or there's recreational activities, or shopping opportunities, or where people simply transfer from Wilshire to, say, a bus going up or down Alvarado, for example. So we identify stops along Wilshire that most facilitate where most people are boarding and alighting, or anticipate they would. That's how our stops were established.
Great. And just one last question. Have you achieved a celebrity status yet with your image on the bus? Do people recognize you?
Yes, they do.
All right. Congratulations.
Are you getting a bonus for that?
I got a free lunch, sir.
Oh, very nice. Free lunch ticket. Okay, thank you. That matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay, now we'll do some public comment. Mr. Sachs? Public comment time.
So I didn't know that the MTA was part of the city of LA, that when you reopen a present, make a presentation, you reopen it, and there's no public comment allowed. Anyway, yesterday's newspaper, the Daily Breeze, actually, had a little comment, billboards have city council fuming. In the Daily Breeze, which is a newspaper from the South Bay, maybe some parts of San Pedro, but I don't know how far it gets delivered throughout the city of LA, and there was no mention of the contentious argument that the city's councils resolved to fight the billboards. And I, when you had that item on your agenda on Wednesday, I sat here and I wondered, where was this resolve on the 10th of September when you had the billboard contracts at the convention center with the LA, with the LA Arena Land Company? Where was this resolve? $2 million. You're going to get people to go out and take an accounting of billboards, and then you're going to charge fees. And, Mr. Alakon, I agree with you sometimes, sometimes I disagree with you, but you made the magic statement about a revenue enhancement for the billboards. You already have one. $2 million for the convention center, for 14, I don't know, regulation-sized billboards and two extremely large billboards. So it's going to be, how are you going to say to a billboard company, you're going to have to pay us X amount of money when you already have a fee set based on the convention center? $2 million. The judge is going to say, they're going to say, well, we can go by the convention center ruling. All that money coming into the city down the drain.
Michael... Michael Carrion.
Congratulations, City Council.
Michael Carrion, you're done, sir. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Michael Carrion.
Yes, thank you. My name's Michael Carrion. And I had a few questions here. Now, can somebody ask Mr. Weisar which one it is? One week, I was spending 10 hours a week with his staff. Following week, it was 20 hours. Yesterday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever day it was, I was being disrespectful to his staff. This is not a personal attack on Mr. Weisar. I kind of liked him, man. He's a nice guy, okay? But when I get disrespected in his staff, his staff disrespects me in his field office, I did what I thought I would do. I spoke to, went above the chain of command, through the chain of command, up to Mr. Weisar. Once again, I sat here for three hours. And it got to the point where I'm here every time I get a chance to. Like I said, it is not a personal attack against Mr. Weisar. But when he starts to listen to people, I don't know who's feeding them this, because it sounds kind of dumb when he has a bunch of different answers to the same thing. He continues to respond to me coming up here. I sat and I spoke to his person in charge, Mr. Hidalgo, for a month before I stopped conversation with him. The whole problem started with one of his staff members, Marcella, who was rude and inconsiderate to my community members and myself. When I came here before, I used to have my disagreements. Mr. Weisar hired a lady, a young lady by the name of Marcia. I stopped coming here. He had no complaints about the disrespect I had with her or respect. I respected her because she got her job done. When I came to his office about Marcella failing to do her work, now I'm being disrespectful. I think I've given everybody here respect. I may be passionate a bit about what I have to say, and I may be direct and bold, but I've given you all the respect. When you give respect, you get respect.
Thank you. Marvin Evans? Marvin Evans.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's outstanding to be with you today. I have a letter that I've drafted and sent out to the White House, to the Vice President, asking for the FEMA agency to step in and work with our county resources to get King Drew's emergency room open. There is no public policy that can tolerate not having an emergency room available for our safe school programs. There's no part of the city, except for Watts, California, that doesn't have a trauma room within three to five minutes available. This is unacceptable public policy of having the King Drew Medical Center emergency room not available. Our schools need to have a comprehensive safe school program. The superintendent of our public instruction says his teaching staff throughout the state is ready to respond to a terrorist attack or a biochemical attack anywhere in the state of California. But we do not have a backbone emergency trauma room. I want to thank you, Ms. Hahn, for your continued diligence on this issue. We look forward to getting that emergency room open as soon as possible. I would hope that the city council would put all due pressure on county and federal resources, and whatever it takes, to get King Drew's emergency room open again. There's no public policy that can have our children without a trauma room available to them. This is just simply unacceptable. Westwood, Brentwood, Pacific Palisades, Engle-- not Englewood, but Encino, and Sherman Oaks have some of the top emergency rooms in the country. There's no reason the black community doesn't have a top-end emergency room. Thank you.
Walter Bechtel.
I wanted to finish what I was trying to say the last time I was in here. I was trying to explain the situation. I'm having a problem with the industry, the music industry, and some of my people and Mr. Weiss's people are having a problem with these sort of people, the Morris-Levi individuals who have been illegally wiretapping and eavesdropping. I just wanted to quote here from 2 Samuel 12. Some people don't think there's any consequences for doing such a thing. And I'm just going to start here with 12, starting at 4 here, and it says, "And there came a traveler unto the rich man, and he spared to take his own flock out of his own herd to dress for the wayfaring man that was come unto him, but took the poor man's lamb and dressed for the man that was come to him. And David's anger was greatly kindled against the man, and he said to Nathan, 'As the Lord liveth, the man hath done this thing shall surely die. And he shall restore the lamb fourfold, because he did this thing, and because he had no pity.' And Nathan said to David, 'Thou art the man.'" When these people take my little songs and things and my poems that I say to myself and are meant for me, or have breached my contracts, that's the same thing as taking my own little "you lamb." This is the only thing I can do. I've got an education, yes. When you take this and you copyright it and make it for yourselves, and you give it to your friends, and give them the credit, and I don't get anything of the credit, that's the same thing. And the consequence for this is going to be exactly the same consequence that David experienced. You're going to have the same things happen to you. You're going to be thrown down in the depths of poverty if your prosecutor doesn't prosecute this thing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Candido, Marit.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Zine, we look forward to another four years of you serving the third district in the city of Los Angeles. I'm here today because I live just north of the Cessna fire, and I want to thank, I want to thank the Fire Department and the Police Department and the DWP workers and all the people that helped save our homes, and it was unbelievable. I lived through the 94 earthquake. Our home was destroyed in that, and all those agencies were there to help then. In 88, we almost lost our home. But this fire was unbelievable. It was unbelievable. And I can't tell you, we had policemen that were there who didn't have masks and who were going up there and trying to remove people from their homes. We have Councilman Greg Smith and Mitch Englinger, who's one of his staff members, they were in uniform and they were evacuating people. So, I want to thank the mayor, and I want to thank all of you, Mr. President, council members, for the people that we have in this city. We have great people that have served this great city, and no matter what happens to me in this town, this is the greatest city and the greatest country in the world, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Yukayo Sedemura. Sedemura, not here. Juan Lozoya? Or Juan Lozoya? Not here. About Mr. Joffe? Joffney.
Good morning, city council members. Mr. President, my name's Pasis Goffney. I run a program called Econ Opportunities. I've been running this program freelance for about six years. I passed out plenty of material to you guys. I don't know if you guys read it or not, but at the end of the day, I'm up here to say that I had a discussion with one of my elders the other day, and he said that it was best in my best, let's say, my best behalf, that I kind of changed my approach with City Hall. And after I seen the other day on Wednesday with you guys, working with that group that was here earlier, I kind of want to commend you guys, because at the end of the day, I'm kind of one of those guys who was a victim of all this democracy and everything that goes on in the streets since I was a kid, and so I got caught up in it. So, eventually, I came up here after I realized that politics were what I was going to end up landing at, and I kind of came up here with an attitude, not towards you guys in general, but just as the whole society itself. And I want to apologize for that. And at the end of the day, it's a great thing that you guys did. And, Mr. Cardenas, I want to thank you for working with those people and making that possible. And I've got 15 years in prison. I don't usually like to talk about it, but you know, myself as being 15 years in prison, like those guys who are here, those guys are soldiers, but I'm a general in the street, and for real. And at the end of the day, I've got some of the most powerful people behind me who would be willing to come and go to work, and all I keep striving for is just to get these guys jobs, because those guys can do gang prevention all day long. But if me and my buddies who I grew up with, who are white guys, who are contractors with the elders that we deal, that we can't have contracts to give these guys work, gang prevention means nothing.
Thank you. Beltran? Beltran? Okay, let's go to the Valley for Rick Nightingale, our final public speaker. To the Valley, Rick Nightingale.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightingale. Yeah, I was reading the paper. I don't usually come on Fridays, because it's a long time to wait, but this is pretty important regarding the DNA regarding rape. I turned around and gave a long speech quite a while ago. I don't keep track of time, you know, but it was quite a few months ago. And it's been in the paper quite a bit this week. Well, Councilman Smith turns around and says, "Smith doesn't blame the council for untested rape evidence. Please don't blame us." Well, hey, you're the people that are in charge. Who do you blame? Laura Cheeks is doing her job. Far as I'm sure, she's the only one that's doing her job. She watches over what she has to do. She does her job, and she brings up things that you people don't want to hear about. Well, I'm sorry. When he says he's appalled to what she stated and what she did, I'm appalled to what you people do, that you're not keeping up with it. That you turn around, and if you get it within two years of the rape, it's evidence forever. Well, and any of you don't get it within the two years, after 10 years, it's gone. You're 7,000 units behind, but you let a half a million dollars go by the wayside that you could have paid somebody to take care of these rape cases and at least establish that much and not have to pay that money back. I mean, you people are the ones in charge. And our latest chief turns around, and he don't think it's that important. He really doesn't. Just by his attitude and some of the attitudes with other people, you don't think it's that important. But it is very important. And far as I'm sure, a lot of this other stuff that you talk about isn't important. You know, like, spread the wealth around. Far as I know, that ain't important, because I don't think I should have to spread my wealth around. Maybe you people, because you make $300,000 a year, should spread the wealth around, but I don't think I should have to. But I mean, this rape thing, hey, you have to do something and get it done now, because time is running out, and it's your job.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, our next item, please. Mr. Garcetti?
Just very briefly, within the Brown Act, this Monday in the Budget and Finance Committee, the financial status report, which addresses the issue that Mr. Weiss has been very passionate about, and which identifies some funding around DNA stuff, and Ms. Ruhl and myself have put forward, will be heard by the committee. So, we commend that to anybody who's interested in the issue. Thank you.
That's the DNA issue?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Madam Clerk.
Next is item 15, and that was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Well, that was called special by Councilmember Zine, because I have to recuse myself on that matter, which I'm going to do.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, who has recused himself on this issue on item 35. We, sorry, 15, 1-5. If we can please open the roll on 15, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Zine can join us again. Next item, please.
Next is item 24, and that was called special because there is a card on this item.
Okay. Let's call up Arnold Sacks on item 24, and then Michael Carrion.
Good afternoon.
Good morning again. Special events on the weekends, again, if you have the, within yourselves, to change a special event, such as the LA Marathon, from a Sunday due to the influence of religious leaders, then any special events should be also changed from the weekend due to their interference with religious practices. I have here, just to show you, I think that you ought to take action on this for sure. This is a Metro Monthly. Do you know what they're doing in Pasadena? They set a marathon for November 16th, which is a Sunday. The city of L.A. changes its marathon from a Sunday to a holiday that's celebrated in Boston because religious leaders come before the council and say, "It interferes with our congregation." And yet, those city officials in Pasadena spit in your face. How disrespectful is that?
Thank you very much. For the record, on these ones, they're, were not the complaints or concerns. In fact, some of these are thrown by some of the local churches and community groups, so that we did not receive those inputs, but thank you. The input is Michael Carrion here. Did not see him here, so we will close the public comment on this. If we'll please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next is item 33, and that was called special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Okay. Mr. Alarcon, we also have four cards. Would you like to take those first, or would you like to make opening comments?
Please.
Okay.
Well, let me sort of describe what this is. First of all, let me apologize to my colleagues. I absolutely believe in the committee system and don't like to bring matters up here that, particularly when I had the opportunity to bring it up in committee. The fact of the matter was that I was absent the day this item came up in committee, and so I neglected to catch it. So, I apologize to my colleagues, especially Mr. Rosendahl. This is a $10,000 contribution made by Philip Morris to Public Works Street Use to enforce against the illegal cigarette sales on the, essentially on the sidewalks. The concern I have is that this would enhance the competitive nature of Philip Morris's business, because it is eliminating, it is enforcing not against the sales that are conducted by Philip Morris or for Philip Morris products, but for products that are counterfeit and otherwise not produced by Philip Morris. And so, I just have a real fundamental philosophical problem with us accepting essentially blood money from Philip Morris to do their dirty work. If they want to enhance our enforcement operations, then help us enforce in the stores that are selling illegally their product to minors. Help us enhance the publicity around reducing the use of cigarettes, but for them to give, it's like McDonald's asking us or giving us money to enforce against a violation at Burger King. It's just not right. And so, I, you know, at this point, I'd be happy to take the public comment, but that's why I raised this issue. I think we should kill this and send a strong message to Philip Morris that there's much more appropriate uses for their dirty money.
Thank you. We have four speakers. Stephen Gallegos is our first, and then Janice Chow. I want to thank you for your patience, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Gallegos. I am the Speaker of Advocacy and Programs Manager for the American Lung Association of California. Los Angeles is a proud city, a big city, a great city. As you already know, L.A. is a leader. What L.A. does, other cities will follow. We're all proud to be here, and we want to do what is right for Los Angeles. Today, the American Lung Association of California stands arm-in-arm with the American Heart Association, the American Cancer Society, and the Coalition for Tobacco-Free L.A. County. We're asking you to reject this check for $10,000 from Philip Morris. On the surface, it looks like a gift, but in retrospect, this money does not come from an industry that does good. Every penny of this $10,000 comes from profits they got from people addicted to their poisonous product, from African Americans, Latinos, Asians, Pacific Islanders, the LGBT community, and youth, groups specifically targeted by Philip Morris in their marketing, sales, and profits. Sure, we all know the city, like all cities, is in tough fiscal year, but what will this money do that the city's tobacco enforcement program, already in existence, doesn't already do? Will $10,000 buy an inspector? No. Will it buy another vehicle? No. Will it buy the city integrity? No. Philip Morris has never done or given anything that will not strengthen their bottom line. $10,000 is a drop in the bucket to Philip Morris. Why not give the city of Los Angeles $1 million? This is a payment to Los Angeles to pay for its own self-interest. Blood money that allows Philip Morris to tell the world, "We're in partnership with the city of Los Angeles, and for only $10,000, they're doing our bidding?" Say no to Philip Morris. Say no to this nicotine-stained lucre. The American Lung Association and its tens of thousands of supporters--
Thank you, Mr. Gallegos. We try to keep it as even as we can in two minutes. Thank you very much.
That's going to put a stamp on this. Return to sender.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallegos. Janice Chow is our next speaker. After that is Dor Gil. After that is Dora Gill.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Janice Chow, here today on behalf of the American Cancer Society. As a public health organization representing the thousands of voices of cancer survivors, caregivers and youth, we urge you to vote against accepting money offered by Philip Morris USA. This money is blood money. It is being used to try to buy goodwill in Los Angeles. The money being offered to you was acquired by manufacturing a deadly product that addicts thousands of people and have led to countless deaths from tobacco use. Accepting tobacco money sends a dangerous message implying that decades of public deception, manipulative marketing practices can be overlooked with a donation. By taking this money, Los Angeles risks giving desperately needed respectability to an industry that costs millions of dollars and kills 550,000 Californians every year. Accepting tobacco money is taking a step backwards for the city of Los Angeles. Your city is well-known for being a longtime leader and paving the way to protect the health of citizens with strong tobacco pulse, tobacco control policy. The tobacco industry specifically targets youth, women, minorities and the underserved, the very same communities we are working so hard to protect. You're dealing with a company that produces deadly addictive products. Tobacco products cause painful, deliberating and fatal diseases including emphysema, heart disease, cancer of the mouth, liver, lung, kidneys, bladder, esophagus, stomach, pancreas, colon, cervix, and contributes to many other diseases and disorders. We urge you to decline money from a company who continues to target vulnerable populations and produces an addictive product that kills thousands every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Dora Gill is our next speaker. After that is Alicia Lopez. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Dora Stella Gill, Director of Advocacy for the American Heart Association. We are here to ask the City Council not approve this $10,000 grant to the Board of Public Works. The tobacco industry's intentions are to advance their communications, public affairs and government relations agendas to prevent any and all tobacco control measures and regulation of this industry. Over 430,000 people die each year from tobacco-related illnesses such as heart disease and stroke. We are reaching out to the city of Los Angeles and ask that in turn, we adopt a written policy to refuse any tobacco company sponsorship and funding. By refusing tobacco company sponsorship, you deny them access to the good name of the city of Los Angeles. A written policy would guarantee that our city will uphold their stand against corporate gifts, financial contributions, advertising and sponsorship by tobacco companies. I thank you for your time and looking forward to continue working with the city as we implement policies that safeguard the public from the dire effects of tobacco. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alicia Lopez is our next speaker. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, President Garcetti and City Councilmembers. My name is Alicia Lopez and I am Chair of the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Los Angeles County. I'm here this morning on behalf of the Coalition to speak on this item which seeks to approve a $10,000 donation from the tobacco company Philip Morris. The Coalition does not support the city taking funds from a company that addicts, deceives, disables and kills millions of Americans. In fact, 430,000 Americans die each year from tobacco-related illnesses. More children alive today will die from tobacco use than from any single cause, including AIDS, alcohol, car accidents, murder, suicides, illegal drugs and fires combined. It is obvious that Philip Morris's real intent is not to protect the public from illegal sales of tobacco products, but to protect their bottom line and receive, um, the revenue, all the revenue they can by halting illegal street sales. So again, the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Los Angeles County does not support the city taking funds from Philip Morris, a company that seeks to addict Americans, including youth, to its deadly product. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. That will, uh, close, uh, comments on, uh, the public. We have Ms. Gruel, Mr. LeBange, Mr. Rosendahl next. Ms. Gruel first.
Mr. Garcetti, I will be brief. As some of you may recall, um, and items come and go and it's hard to know what's on here, but I did vote no on this, um, when it came before because I thought it was important for us to not, um, as someone said, take away the name of the city of Los Angeles. Uh, $10,000 is not worth, um, having an organization. As you look at it, it really is just saying, "We don't want them to sell our product on the street" versus selling in the other places. You've heard from the many organizations who fight every day to ensure that we educate our children and try to save lives, uh, by not smoking. Um, and, uh, I think, uh, and now, and now famous saying, which is, "Thanks, but no thanks." Um, that's what we should say as well, in addition to send it back, um, and, uh, put that stamp on it and, um, but, uh, I think for the City Council, we should say that. Let's return that money, um, have them put it into other uses, uh, that will help educate people. This is not about educating people. This is about enforcing, uh, a law that we should be enforcing already and helps a particular entity, not necessarily, uh, stopping people from smoking in the city of Los Angeles. So I've had the pleasure of working with the Coalition and others on a number of, of areas where we've been successful in stopping smoking in farmers markets. I can't tell you how many people have come up to me and said, "Thank you for doing that." I said, "I just thought it was a no-brainer that we already had no smoking at farmers markets. It seemed like an oxymoron that you would be able to do that." Uh, so I, I stand in opposition, um, and hope that and appreciate Mr. Alakon calling it special to maybe convince other colleagues as well, uh, to vote no on this item. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. LeBange is next.
I just wanted to ask, because, uh, I appreciate all the advocates who we know are working on issues coming forth soon on, related to an additional smoking ban. But, uh, Mr. Rosendahl, uh, Public Works, uh, should we continue this and get the officials here to tell us what this is all about? Because you know what I get tired of? I get tired of butts anywhere, okay? And I pick up butts. And the question is, whatever this is about, I think any kind of awareness or any kind of opportunity, yes, we did reject one other donation, I believe it was to the Central Library some years ago. Uh, what do you hear? What do you know, Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, thank you very much for this point of clarification here. Um, you know, we took 50,000 from Philip Morris for the same project for the LAPD. They've spent it. This was $10,000. Street Services was here earlier, was on consent, they left, and now they're trying to buzz back before we take a vote. It would be great if we could continue this item till next Tuesday, let Street Services explain. You know, I totally agree that Philip Morris and cigarettes are bad, but money to help us enforce laws coming from, it doesn't mean in any way we're supporting it. And this is an 11th hour play. I appreciate Mr. Alakon saying he couldn't make the meeting or he didn't make the meeting or whatever, but it comes out like this, Street Services was ready to talk. So if we can continue the item till next Tuesday, so they can explain what the $10,000 is used for, it doesn't in any way endorse smoking. Look, we're a city with a huge deficit and frankly, these people give money, they're liquor companies who give money. There's all kinds of people who give money that have their own issue, but it's not an issue about Philip Morris to me. It's a, it's an issue about enforcing laws and, and getting rid of those butts, but that's for another day. If we could continue this, colleagues, that would let Street Services do the proper discussion so we could be empowered. I'm not a dem, you know, playing out any politics here. It's just that they were here and then they left.
Okay, uh, Mr. President, if I could ask a question, uh, since we're still on my time?
We're still on your time, yes.
Is it legal for me to ask, uh, to continue it right now?
You can move to continue. We would take that up.
I move to continue this Tuesday.
We would take that up at the end of, uh, of our debate. Okay? That is before us. Uh, Mr. Rosendahl, uh, you don't, okay, Mr. Alakon? Mr. Alakon is next.
Actually, they're here.
Why don't you also invite Philip Morris in? Two. You know, I'm just saying, and we can talk all afternoon. Uh, you know, I got it. Gary, they want you to front. Gary Harris, Public Works.
So Street Services has made it. Thank you for getting back.
No problem. Good afternoon, Gary Harris of Bureau of Street Services.
Any questions from, well, Mr. Alakon has the floor, so I'll start with him. Mr. Alakon?
The, uh, this $10,000 is going for, uh, the enforcement of, uh, contraband. Is that not correct?
It goes toward the enforcement of our anti-vending ordinance on city streets and also our news rack, our, I'm sorry, newsstand enforcement.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, what cigarette sales are these?
We find that a percentage, probably about 20% of the items that we confiscate on street sales are cigarettes. The number one illegal item sold in newsstands are cigarettes, single individual cigarettes for purchase that are newsstand citywide, and that would be the focus of the enforcement we would be doing with the additional donation.
In the report, it talks about counterfeit, it talks about unlicensed or unstamped cigarettes. Are these not part of the program?
Absolutely.
So these would be products that are not, not, uh, that, that, that compete with Philip Morris's, uh, legal products?
That's correct. And also, there's the issue that at newsstands, there's no regulation on the sale of these illegal items. We find that these items are even being sold to minors out of newsstands which were designed only to distribute periodicals.
Members, uh, we can talk to Street Services all we want. This is a policy discussion and the policy is whether or not you believe that we should enhance the competitive advantage of Philip Morris to sell and make profit off of their sales of cigarettes, uh, by enforcing on illegal cigarettes that disadvantage Philip Morris. We would then be complicitous with enhancing Philip Morris's business opportunities. That's the bottom line. Uh, so you can, you can talk till, you can talk till the day is long, but the fundamental question is whether we should be in bed with Philip Morris and accept their, their donation, which represents, uh, represents their marketing effort to sell their cigarettes. Now, this is, we are not alone in this. They are spreading their, their cancerous-forming blood money all over the country to do the exact same thing. It is part of their fundamental mission to sell more cigarettes. So if you, you can, you can say this is just a small contribution, you can say it's, "We need it in tough times." Well, you know what we need? We need people to be able to beat cancer. We need people to be able to avoid getting cancer in the first place and we need companies like Philip Morris to go bye-bye. And so, so I have no problem, we can talk, like I said, to Street Services all day long, but the fundamental point is whether you believe that the city of Los Angeles should be receiving donations from a company that is killing people with their cancerous-forming, uh, cancerous product, uh, and, and, or whether we don't. And I don't. And that's why I wanted to reconsider this matter because I will never vote yes for this kind of donation.
Mr. Wesson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and, and, and members. First of all, and I love you, Richard, I think that it's ridiculous to suggest that by a small donation like this, that Philip Morris is trying to put all of their competitors out of business. But more importantly than that, in my view, I wouldn't wait to the 11th hour after this thing went through committee. It's been a suggestion that this be, uh, continued for how long, I would think that you would get up and, and afford Bill the opportunity to have a few days so that he can figure out how he will, he wants to proceed. The only thing that I have a problem with is I'd have got more than $10,000. But anyway, I recommend that we at least, out of courtesy to a colleague, afford him a few days so that he can have more discussions with, uh, Street Services. I'll, I'll end basically with this. I know that in the district that I represent, we have a Dickens of a time enforcing illegal street vendors and newsstands and it, it's hard for me to put the money together to bring all of the different departments to do that. So what they do is good. I guess the question is, do we want to do it with the Philip Morris money? But I do think that we should give you to Tuesday or Wednesday or whatever you want and, uh, that would just be my, uh, suggestion. But that, that was good, Richard. That, I think that was a stretch, that Philip Morris is going to give us $10,000 to, to eliminate their competition. And you said that with a straight face.
Mr. Zine?
I have a technical question and I'm not a smoker. If Philip Morris manufactures cigarettes, who else manufactures cigarettes that they're in competition with?
Well, there are a number of companies that are part of a coalition that manufacture cigarettes who provided training not only for, for our agency, but for Building and Safety, LAPD, on the counterfeit products that are out there. So there are a number of competing agencies and those agencies also make donations to law.
So we've received other money from other tobacco producers to enhance our enforcement in the city of Los Angeles?
For the Bureau of Street Services, this is the first time that we've received a donation. However, there have been other donations accepted by the city and in fact, just last fiscal year, LAPD did.
From other tobacco companies.
From other tobacco companies.
Thank you.
Mr. Alakon?
Actually, this is a point of information. I want to make it very clear. Uh, this matter was on the agenda last Wednesday. Uh, I called it special then. My staff has been in communication with Mr. Rosendahl's staff since Wednesday. Um, and so I want to make it clear, nobody's getting caught off guard here. Um, I have no problem with continuing the matter if Mr. Rosendahl thinks he needs more time on this issue. I don't need any more time, but I have no problem with continuing the matter if that be the, the choice. I don't think it's going to change anybody's opinion, but, uh, but, but that's fine with me. I, I apologize for, for missing the meeting. I, you know, I'm sure I had a good reason for missing the meeting. It certainly wasn't because of this. Uh, but, uh, and, and I know, but, but my point is that, uh, when I saw it on the agenda, I couldn't in good conscience allow this to, to get by without, uh, the opportunity to, um, make a plea to, to, uh, change this, this action.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel, then Mr. Rosendahl.
It's Friday, it's to give you lots next week and I think, um, as mentioned, it, it was called special on Wednesday. I wasn't here, but I know, uh, this morning called special. Um, but, Mr. Zine, we may have, and I don't know when we've accepted it, but, uh, two wrongs don't make a right. And I think if we don't believe that we should take this money for doing their job, um, or for helping their, you know, trying to get rid of that competition that are selling them on the streets, um, I think, uh, saying no is appropriate and if the Chair would like to have it held off until next week, that's fine too. But I just wanted to respond that I think, um, if, we may have done it in the past, it just doesn't make it right.
Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Zine, Mr. LeBange.
Yeah, look, I, I appreciate everybody's discussion, you know, I don't want to make a mountain out of a mohill. Uh, but what I would then suggest, I'm not going to continue, I'm not going to waste any more time for $10,000. We've got billions, millions of dollars' worth of issues to play with, but the precedent you're establishing, colleagues, is who do you take money from going forward? It, it is a precedent as far as I'm concerned. The liquor companies, all the other tobacco companies, the 50 grand we've taken for LAPD for the same thing from a cigarette company. I want to then have us all, look, I am totally against smoking. I quit when I was 39. I was addicted to smoking. I know how tobacco works. I know it creates cancer. I have been a big supporter of, of the Heart Association. I've had them on the show, got awards from them actually, for being who I've been about this issue. So I don't want to get into this pettiness, but you're making a precedent about who do you take money from and who you don't, okay? You know, there's a lot of groups that give this city money for various reasons that are good causes for the operation. I don't care if it's the Police Foundation which takes money from this and that, or other foundations that we support, or even us in trying to do our budget gap deficits, we take money from groups. So if you're going to play a big shot about this right now because Philip Morris is, is a tobacco company, which frankly, I think tobacco companies are terrible and I think it's awful that people smoke, no matter who they are, you will set a precedent and I will look at every dime this city gets from whatever the vendor is out there that peddles its stuff, because I always thought money was money, we take it and we do our thing with it, that we think is right as a council. You want to make a precedent out of this? Fine, I'm not going to make a big deal of it. It's, it's the concept of what you're doing here, folks.
Mr. Zine?
If, if we're going to continue it, I have a request for additional information. If we're not going to continue it, then I don't need that information.
I think the, uh, is, continuing is still before us? Mr. LeBange? It's your motion.
I want to hear from the city attorney. Was I in line or out of line?
It's still, it's still before us potentially.
In line, very good. My, my, I just have a question, so I'll punch it again. Can I ask a question here? I think what would be guidance, because I remember this happened before the Central Library in my lifetime. I don't know if my lifetime as a councilperson or as others. There maybe should be a list of people, of organizations that we don't want. There should be someone that talks to, represents the city that said, "This is not some organization that we would want. We thank you for thinking of Los Angeles, but we don't want it." I mean, I think it's, you know, there's a process that we should do instead of getting, you worked real hard, you tried to solve a problem here, you, you love the advocates for good health, but yet now at the end, when you come together, it doesn't work. So there needs to be some guidance from somebody and I don't know who receives it because we have foundations, whether it's the Library Foundation, Recreation Department. What if, uh, uh, you know, someone had a, uh, someone wanted to give another source, let's say, uh, billboards to the city of Los Angeles on issues that supports youth? Would we want to accept that? I don't know. You know, if they're, if they're video, we don't want to accept it.
You know, if they're video, we don't want to accept it. That's the biggest range of challenge we have right now. So I think we need a little guidance. I would suggest what Mr. Alakon said though, and listen to his argument, and I know Herb you think it's a stretch, but if you take the stretch out of it, it's real simple. They're asking you to remove what is competition from the street to hire an agent of the law of Los Angeles. That's what I think it is on there. That's what it's real clear. Forget all the other stuff. So if we reject that, but then ask the city attorney to come back with some guidance on who do we appoint in the city to be a receiver so we don't get to this point here? I'd rather have said to them early, "No, thank you," and move on. Because I know some of these companies, and I don't think Philip Morris is one of them, but I'm not an expert, has multiple divisions, products, just because it's a, from one division, it may have a help in other areas. I know other parts of the city do need help. With that being said, I think we should vote for it, vote it up or down, and then ask for help and direction in the future.
So you withdrawing your continuation?
I'm withdrawing.
Okay. Yes, point of clarification? Well, is it a substantive point of clarification? Or is it a rule?
Substantive clarification, but the, the clarification is that this isn't precedent-setting. Philip Morris gave $50,000 to LAPD. I spoke out against it.
That's actually not, that's out of order. I'll come back to you, because for points of information, if something was unclear and you needed clarified, or point of order is that there's something about the proceeding. So, I know, but you're not, you're not next. Ms. Gruel is, you have to press the button to do that. That wouldn't be, that wouldn't take precedence over the orders in the queue, or the speakers in the queue.
I think, Ms. Alakon, what you were going to say, it's not a clarification, and what is, is to the public it's saying, and I, you know, I love you, Bill, but there is a difference between what the money goes for. And in this instance, it's not just going for whatever LAPD would like to do or a general contribution to the city of Los Angeles. It is specific to dealing with something that is there, in their realm of what they're doing, and the sales of their product or other product illegally on the street. And so that, to me, is a difference in the kind of money that you're accepting. And so I just thought it was important for us to be able to have that discussion between the two. So that's what I was going to say too, Richard, so it was not a, to me.
Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Zine, Mr. Alakon are in the queue. Mr. Rosendahl.
I love everybody loving everybody, and we need to do that. We need more love in this world. Just again, because I don't want to throw street services under the bus, okay? Why were you guys taking this money, and what does it do for anything that happens with a vendor? What was the point of it? Was it just what they said for Philip Morris to be able to do its thing or not? Or was it, explain it, would you, again?
Our purpose in taking the money was to enhance our general street vending and newsstand regulation, not specific just to cigarettes. Cigarettes were incidental to enforcing Section 4200B of the Los Angeles Municipal Code that prohibits sales on the public right-of-way. Our purpose was to use the money in that general enforcement, which may include cigarettes, but is not specific to cigarettes.
So this isn't to give Philip Morris a competitive edge, or even to love him? It's just you guys doing your job, and this is another nickel in the pot to do your job?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Mr. Zine.
Just two items. Number one, cigarettes are legal. While they kill you, they are legal. And I'm not a smoker, I'll once again admit. Also, the police department works with the movie industry for the illegal DVDs, the illegal record industry. Does your department work with them to confiscate those illegal black-market items?
Yes, we do.
So you'll get money from a movie industry to go out there and get the black-market DVDs that are sold on the street, and we get money from the industry to do that?
Yes, we get assistance from the industry with the cost of disposal of the evidence. So yes, we do.
So it's not uncommon for the city to take money from other sources to do enforcement, to enhance that enforcement, and whatever they come in contact with, whether it's a DVD or a cigarette or something else, then they initiate the action against that particular illegal activity?
Yes.
Because under 4200, you can't vend off the streets.
That's correct.
So they could be selling popsicles on the streets. They would also be in violation, you do enforcement on that.
Any item on the street.
Any item, so it's like, you put it in the can, and it's it. So it's not specifically, as Mr. Rosendahl said, it's not specifically against cigarettes. It's against any and all illegal vending.
Any vending on the public right-of-way.
Okay.
Ms. Han jumps to the top of the queue for the first time, then Mr. Labange.
I'd like to call the question. I think we understand what this is all about, and I want to thank Richard for giving us the opportunity to rethink this and hear about it. I'm going to vote no on it.
This is just a, is there any objection to calling the question?
No objection.
If there's no objection, the question is called. So we no longer have a motion to continue before us. We just have the motion to accept the money. A no vote is to not accept. A yes vote is to accept. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Four ayes, six noes.
Okay, that does not pass, but that carries till next Tuesday unless there's a motion to receive and file.
I don't want to receive either.
Okay, we have a motion to receive and file for Mr. Labange. Please open the roll on receive and filing. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Okay, that is received and filed. Next order of business, please.
I want to continue it going.
Mr. President, there are motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Mr. President, there are a few excuses on the desk.
Okay, let's go through this.
Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused on November 4th, 5th, and 7th for city business. A motion is required.
What, does that take us down to?
That would leave council to 10 members on November 7th.
Let's hold that for now, and we will look at the, okay, all right. Well, let's go ahead and make the excuse, then we'll figure out who we can get here, and we'll see if you get called that day. I'll move that, Ms. Gruel seconds, without objection, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Park requires a request to be excused on November 4th for personal business. A motion is required, and that leaves council to 11 members.
Okay, we'll move that, Ms. Gruel seconds, and that will be approved.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused on January 6th, 7th, and 9th for personal business. This meets policy.
Okay, he's excused.
Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused on January 30th for city business. This meets policy.
Okay.
And that clears the desk.
All righty. Any business announcements, committee stuff? Is this community stuff or committee stuff?
Announcement about what happened. And I do have an adjourning motion too, but I just want to make a comment. At 2 o'clock the night before last, I got a call that we had a fire. And we had a fire in my district on the side of the road there on the 405. I immediately went to the scene, and I saw the most incredibly coordinated effort by the authorities in our great region. I want to especially thank Chief Frye, who led the battalion of the firemen and dealt with it, and also Chief Pat Butler. Donald Fraser, the acting chief of the whole fire department, was in charge. Chief Hara was there from the police department, and Captain Bill Eaton. We had an incredible coordinated effort with the Los Angeles County and City helicopter pilots that went in the dark and just kept putting that fire out. The police department, everybody together, the highway patrol, you saw the best coordinated effort I've ever seen. And I want to thank a couple of constituents, Louise and Ernie Frankel up in Mountain Gate, that got everybody organized, got their cars packed, patrolled the area, and we were ready to leave. I want to thank Wendy Rosen, who in Mandeville Canyon, put a phone tree out. We were on the phone 3 o'clock in the morning, 4 o'clock in the morning, and everybody in Mandeville Canyon were ready. We had 20 fire trucks in Mandeville Canyon, 20 fire trucks in Bundy Canyon there in the Canter area, and we were all worried that the fire would leap over and do the Mandeville Canyon fire that it did almost 30 years ago to the day. The preparation, the coordination was breathtaking. If they hadn't done that from about midnight, when the first spark was seen by some cops, vice squad types who were doing a gang thing, and they phoned it in, and 1 o'clock, they were up in the air already putting the fire out. We saved Mountain Gate, we saved Northern Brentwood, we saved these canyons, and God bless our city folks who coordinated with the county and the state folks that came to the service of the community. Thank you so much on behalf of all of my constituents in the 11th District. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Thanks for being on site so quickly with that. Any other business announcements? Is that an adjourning motion or announcement, Mr. Zine?
Adjourning.
Announcements? Okay. If I can ask everybody, please rise in council chambers for our adjourning motions. And we will begin with Mr., if I could ask everybody in chambers to please rise, thank you, with Mr. Alakon.
Members, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in the memory of the person who is listed as John Doe, number 214, in the coroner's office. On Monday, October 13th, 2008, the Merrick Fire raged out of control in the northeast San Fernando Valley. And many of you know that one person lost his life, a homeless gentleman. He was a gentle man by all accounts, the people who had seen him pass by. Not too many people had the opportunity to communicate with him. He and his little white dog, who also perished along his, at his side in the fire. But I think we should not let this death go by in vain. I hope that it gives us a renewed incentive to act on the issue of homelessness, wherever it may be. In the extent, in the incidence of this particular fire, perhaps we need to polish up our emergency response services to address homelessness, as some of the people that might need to be evacuated and their whereabouts should be known in advance. We know where they are, and I'm not pointing any finger of blame here, but this man who nobody has claimed in terms of being a relative or a friend, should not die in vain, as I said. He was well-known to the community of Lake Buteris and Pacoima. Anybody who drove on foothill might have seen him pushing his cart. He didn't really harm anybody, but he spoke loudly to the issues of homelessness that all of us struggle against. My office will be organizing a memorial service for this person, because nobody should perish and not be recognized for the life that they led. In this case, I'm hoping that we can learn something from his life that he gave.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon, and thank you for doing that. And Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have two adjourning motions today. The first is for Doreen Berg. She passed away on Wednesday, October 22nd, 2008, at the age of 82 years old. She resided in Woodland Hills and has been a resident of Los Angeles for over 60 years. Doreen met her husband at the Roosevelt Hotel in 1948 at a leap-year dance and raised her entire family in the San Fernando Valley. All of her children grew up, graduates of Los Angeles schools, and still live here in Los Angeles. She is the grandmother of one of my staff members, Lexi Richards, and she talked fondly of her and the experience, and she had fallen ill in the last several months, and they weren't sure she was going to make it. And I think they had an opportunity, though, to tell her how much they appreciated her. She was a loving wife, mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother. She was the, as I mentioned, the maternal grandmother of Lexi Richards. She survived by her loving family, including her children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, and ask that we adjourn in her memory. The other adjournment I'd like us to do is in memory of Judge Jack Tenner. I don't believe we've been able to adjourn in his motion, excuse me, adjourn here in council. He died on Monday, October 20th, 2008, at the age of 88 from complications from Parkinson's disease. Judge Tenner was a retired Los Angeles Superior Court judge who was involved in many of the civil rights struggles over the last 60 years, including fighting restrictive housing covenants in the 1940s, and helping to elect some of the most prominent African-American office holders, which is where I met him, through the late Tom Bradley. He was born in Kiev, Ukraine on October 2nd, 1920, and fled the former Soviet Union with his parents five years later to escape the persecution of the Jews. They immigrated to Canada and eventually settled in Chicago where he earned his degree, his law degree at DePaul University. After passing the Illinois bar, he joined the Navy and fought in the Pacific War during World War II. He arrived in Los Angeles in 1946 and became immediately involved in civil rights issues after passing the bar in 1947 here in California. Until the 1950s, the Los Angeles County Bar Association had a whites-only membership rule. Black lawyers formed their own organization, the John M. Langston Club. When Judge Tenner learned of this inequality, he insisted that he wasn't going to allow the Langston Law Club to be a segregated law club, so he became the first white member of the Langston Bar Club. He joined the fight to integrate firehouses in Los Angeles. In the 1950s, black firefighters were restricted to serving in only two fire stations on Central Avenue, and opportunities for advancement were severely limited. After the 1954 U.S. Supreme Court decision, M. Brown versus the Board of Education outlawed school segregation, however, the doors to the city's firehouses were forced to open too. Tenner and lawyers from the ACLU helped black firefighters break down that barrier. He also worked on the issue of housing discrimination, and particularly on the deeds that forbid sales to non-whites, which really prevented African-Americans from owning homes in most Los Angeles neighborhoods. He went to the houses, talked to people, made sure that he was able to change as he would go, actually, and accompany these individuals who were African-American who wanted the houses, but he introduced them as members of his domestic staff. After he closed the deal, he would turn the property over to them. One of the great houses that Judge Tenner bought was for baseball great Frank Robinson in Baldwin Hills. He also helped Tom Bradley buy a house in Lamert Park years before he became mayor. When Bradley decided to run for office, Judge Tenner was one of his most diligent supporters on the West Side. He raised campaign funds and wrote many of Mayor Bradley's speeches. Judge Tenner was one of the first Recreation and Parks Commissioner and Airport Commissioner. He has served as a mentor to many politicians, particularly in the African-American community. He served on the bench for 10 years until he retired in 1990 and became a private judge and mediator. He handled extraordinarily complex million-dollar settlements as a private judge, and the mediator, who's a mediator, in cases such as the Aaron Brockovich case regarding water contamination in Hinckley, California. In the 1990s, he was well-known to the wider public for his commentary in the O.J. Simpson trial for the Larry King Show on CNN. He was an extraordinary man up until his death, who is very active and an incredible gentleman, who I know was such a good friend to Tom Bradley and a good friend to people in this city who had no voice. And so he will surely be missed. He has survived by a second wife, Georgianne, a son Scott, a daughter Monica, brother Alvin, and eight grandchildren. It really is an honor for us to be able to adjourn in his memory and the difference that he made here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Ms. Han is our next speaker.
Thank you. A member of my Watts Gang Task Force, Arvis Jones, who's also the executive director of the Center for the Grief for Loss of Children, ironically and tragically, lost her child, Damon Lamont Jones, the other night. He was 38 years old. He was her only surviving son, and I'd like us to adjourn in his memory today. He worked as a mentor to many young men who've been incarcerated, assisting them in the preparation for a better life once they got released from prison. He was known as a mediator because he worked very hard to foster race relations between individuals, even within the prison system. He married his high school sweetheart, Michelle, who is expecting their child, I believe, next month. He survived by Michelle, his mother, Arvis, father Johnny, his other children, Damon Junior, Denzel, and Jessica, three grandchildren, and his grandmother, Lily Pearl Cornish. Services are scheduled for Saturday, November 1st, at Trinity Baptist Church. It is just so sad to think Arvis has dedicated her life, and we've seen it many times in Watts recently, she immediately goes to the assistance of people who have lost their children, particularly those to violence. And for this to have happened to her son, her only surviving son, really seems unfair and wrong, and such a tragedy, it's on so many levels. But I want to adjourn in his memory today and reach out and give our sympathy to Arvis and, you know, really surround her with our love at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson will second, and we'll have Mr. Rosendahl second on the previous one for the judge. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thomas Gerard Holzbog. Architect and planner, Thomas Gerard Holzbog, recently passed away unexpectedly in Madrid, Spain, on September 24th, 2008, while traveling with his beloved partner, Janet Louise Dryson. He was born in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, on October 25th, 1933, and will be missed greatly by many, especially those in the architectural community, where he was noted for his contemporary style and recognized as a spokesman and educator in the environmental design community. He received a degree in architecture from Yale University and a graduate degree in urban planning from Harvard University. He was a Fulbright scholar and served in the U.S. Armed Forces. Thomas is survived by his daughters Jessica Jane and Arabella Israello, son-in-law Daniel Israello, grandson Eli Israello, brother Charles Holzbog, and sister-in-law Margaret Holzbog, and his dearest Janet.
Holzbog, and his dearest Janet Louise Dryson. The two of them were together for the last eight years, and when you talk about love, it was an amazing love to see the two of them, they uplifted each other, and graced all of us with their presence. I, I will miss Tom a lot, may he rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Weston, Mr. Zain, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Weston.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President and members, I rise to ask that we adjourn in the memory of Vincent R. Walker, who was the son of a friend of many of ours, Sonny and Jackie Dupont Walker. Uh, he passed on October 20th, he was forty-five years old, and since 1999, he'd been struggling with Lou Gehrig's disease. He lived up in the Sacramento area, and he survived by his wife Sherri Walker, his children, uh, his, uh, parents, and a host of friends and relatives. If we could have all members on that, I appreciate that.
Absolutely, we do all members, and our deepest sympathies with the Dupont Walker family.
Jackie Dupont was, uh, colleague of ours, uh, the, uh, elected charter reform commission, a wonderful lady. Uh, I have adjourned motion for Alex Rudy Lugo, passed away October 21st after a two-year battle with lung cancer. Former Canoga Park High School student, parent, and coach, Rudy Lugo, passed away, he was sixty years of age. Coach Lugo lived and served the Canoga Park and West Valley communities as a mentor, teacher, and friend. Moved to Canoga Park in 1956 with his parents and sister, attended Canoga Park High from sixty-two to sixty-five. Received his bachelor from CSUN when it was known as Valley State College, began his teaching career at Canoga Park High in 1968. For eighteen years, he taught Spanish, as well as American literature, health, and PE. In 1974, he began coaching Canoga Park High School's baseball and wrestling teams, before becoming varsity head coach of the Hundreds Football Team in 1986. As coach, he led the wrestling team to thirty-five city championships, held his football team qual, helped his team, football team qualify for eight of ten CIF LA City Playoffs. His kind of talent dedication earned him many awards, among them, the ABC7 NFL, Southern California High School Coach of the Week, and the Canoga Park Walk of Hearts Honor. At Canoga Park High School, Coach Lugo met the love of his life, his wife Nancy, they had a son and daughter, his son Christopher, played for him at Canoga Park High, and his daughter Melissa was a cheerleader. Coach Lugo decided to retire due to his illness, he helped continue his legacy by naming his son assistant coach. When Coach Lugo was not coaching, he was involved in the community, he taught religious classes at Our Lady of the Valley Catholic Church. Whenever he was on the field, or at the local church, Coach Lugo dedicated his life to helping at-risk youth in his community. His presence will be sorely missed, but his commitment and beat-out-all-odds attitude in life will certainly leave a lasting impact in the lives of those in the Third Council District. On November 7th, Canoga Park will honor Coach Lugo at halftime at its homecoming game, its stadium will be officially named for him. A rosary for Coach Lugo will be held 7:30 Monday, October 27th, and a funeral scheduled for 10:30 on Tuesday, October 28th, both at Our Lady of the Valley Catholic Church, preceded in death by his wife Nancy, survived by his son Christopher and his daughter Melissa. May Coach Lugo rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Very much, Mr. President. It's with great sadness that I announce, uh, the passing of Les Schobert, he passed away on October 14th, 2008, at the age of sixty-one. Um, Les began working as a zookeeper at Busch Gardens after graduating from the University of South Florida in 1969, and he rose quickly to hold key positions. In 1970/80, he became general, became general curator for the North Carolina Zoo, and later served as animal collection curator at the Los Angeles Zoo, our zoo here in Los Angeles, from 1992 to 1996. Les was a key member in helping making sure that Ruby, a Los Angeles zoo elephant, be relocated to an animal sanctuary in Northern California. Aside from elephants, Les's first passion was actually chimps. Les took up the plight of a lone chimp named Ham at the Washington DC Zoo. Ham was the chimp sent by NASA into space in 1961, long before any astronaut set foot in outer space. For seventeen years, this chimp lived in a life of solitude and isolation. Les knew that this was not right, and under his leadership, and with his determination, Ham eventually made his way to the North Carolina Zoo to live out the remainder of his life with a family of chimps. In 1996, Les left the Los Angeles Zoo and served as a consultant to zoos and animal welfare organizations, and became a leader in elephant husbandry, and was widely published in papers such as the Washington Post. World-renowned, um, primatologist Dr. Jane Goodall states, and I quote, "I have great, I have a great deal of respect for his commitment to the chimpanzee as a species and his concern for individual animals," end quote. Les will be missed by his colleagues, family, and friends, and hundreds of animals he looked after over the years. Donations can be sent to Indefensive Animals, Paw's Elephant Sanctuary, and the Elephant Sanctuary. He's survived by his longtime companion, Gretchen Nieder, sons Brian of Florida and Grant of North Carolina, his parents, Dr. Earl Schobert and Laura Schobert of Florida, a brother and two grandchildren.
Second for Mr. Rosenau, please. If there's no other adjourning motions, um, I'm sorry, announcement, Mr. Cardenas?
Twenty-second announcement, thank you so much, Mr. President, twelve hundred free flu shots, so colleagues, please tell your constituents, twelve hundred free flu shots will be given at the Third Annual Senior Veterans Health and Safety Fair at the Japanese Garden, right there in the San Fernando Valley at 6100 Woodley Avenue, that's right off of Victory on Woodley, and it's being put on by Public Works, Recreation and Parks, and a whole host of thirty other organizations from the county, and the city, and various governments. Uh, so we invite all Angelinos to please, uh, come by, especially seniors, to the Third Annual Senior and Veterans Health and Safety Fair, while the county of Los Angeles will be giving out twelve hundred free flu shots, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if we please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Grohan, Weisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenau, Smith, Wyss, Weston, Zain, Garcetti, ten members present.
Will next be in session on the 28th of October, that is, this coming Tuesday, we'll see you then, have a great weekend. This meeting is adjourned.